Is there a light in this room, red light?
Uh, I don't think so. He'll tell you.
Yell action. Okay. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 8th, 6:30 Council Workshop. Councilor Katerina had an idea of getting our representatives together to speak about some issues that between the town and the state and funding. And we're going to discuss that tonight with our representatives here. We have, is it, I'm sorry, if I get this wrong, Representative Boyle?
We're senators.
Senator Boyle and Senator Millet and Representative, well, he'll with us tonight. Representative Shiroki was unable to attend because she had previous engagements in Augusta, I believe it was. So let's get started. We'll start, I'll start first with Councilor Katerina.
Thank you very much, and thanks so much for coming down. All three of you were coming home early, I guess, depending on how the day went. I'm very happy that you could come. I know one of my goals in being elected was to improve communications between the town council and those who represent us in Augusta. And just get some dialogue going about the impact on the decrease in revenue sharing and decrease in school funding on the town of Scarborough and the 20,000 people who live here in the, in the town. And I'm not looking at it as, oh, we're just going to sit here and say, what are you guys going to do when we're really mad and whatever, whatever. I really see this as a two-way conversation. And I'd also like to hear from the three of you ways in which we can help you also. Because I know it's not easy being in the legislature. Luckily, as a town councillor, we don't have party caucuses to answer to, and we don't have, Jim calls them advocates, I call them lobbyists, standing outside the doors waiting to grab us the minute we, we leave the doors. But we are certainly advocates for the people of the town of Scarborough and elected, obviously, by them to represent their interests. And I know when I was campaigning this time around, I heard over and over and over again, help, help, help with my property taxes. And people are very concerned about that. That was really the top of, of the list for most folks. So again, thank you for coming. And I would say, why don't we go around and make sure everyone knows who everyone is, too?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, well, just go ahead.
I'm Ed Blade. I've met you.
Good idea.
And I'm, I'm very interested in, in what's going to be happening this year. Last year, we, a year, actually, a year ago tonight, we had a workshop, and one of the items on the workshop was to limit growth in our budget by no more than 3%. And when we went through that, it all came out pretty close to 3%. And then all of a sudden, the state fell down right in front of us, and our mill rate increase was over 7%. We can't afford that anymore. We just can't afford it. Something's got to be done.
Okay, Amy.
Yeah.
Introduce yourself and...
I'm Amy Bullock, represent half of Scarborough, the coastal side of town, from Cape Elizabeth to Old Orchard, and not even most of the time up to Route 1.
Hey, well, I'm Councilor Richard Sullivan. Tim?
He's chairman.
Okay.
All right. Excuse me.
Yep.
I'm Jim Benedict. I've been on the council a couple of years, and each year seems to get a little more confusing when it comes to try to understand what the, at the state level, what is being done. It seems to me that they get into it, you people get into a disagreement about something, and the next thing we know, our taxes go up. And as Ed said, my concern is, I just, just can't keep going this way. I've been in town over 10 years, my taxes have doubled. And I can't say that anything within the town has doubled for the cost of it, except for reimbursements to the state. And it's always reimbursement, reimbursement, reimbursement. But then on the other hand, it's spend, spend, spend. And then no one has the ability, or doesn't share, care to share the ability, just stand up and say, no, we can't do it. It just, it just cannot be done. Instead of, I hate to say it, and I don't mean it in accusatory fashion, but it seems like no one's got the backbone to stand up and say, no, no more. And it's costing us people moving out of town, and it's costing some, some of the services in town to go down a little bit, not a lot. But I get tired, from a councilman's point of view, of people pointing fingers saying, oh, Scarborough's such an affluent town, you can do that. Well, no, it, that should have nothing to do with what we get charged for. And worse than that, the way we get charged, it's not like we even have a say in the matter. It's just, here's your share. Well, I don't remember being asked to sit in on any conversations on what our share is, or even a reasonable explanation as to what our share is. And I think it would be easier to swallow if we all knew where the bang for the buck was going. I guess that's about all I have to say, because it, it's got me pretty annoyed from the point of, I escaped Massachusetts to escape some of the baloney that goes on with the government in Massachusetts, and what gets paid and how it gets paid. The big dig in Massachusetts, I guess, is something I would expect all of you to know about. If you don't, I'll be glad to tell you at another point. But that was just one of the biggest flashes, the way the government allowed that money to be spent. And I just heard on the news again last Sunday that they've got to go redoing a good portion of it, which is, to me, that's unacceptable. Someone's going to be held accountable somewhere. I mean, there's, as a former contractor, I know from when I worked on public land, they make you come up with a bond. There's bonding companies, so you might have to put up a $200,000 bond, but it's only going to cost you 2,000. And the charges can be from 0 to 10%. And the town, city, whatever, can insist in your contract that you've got a bond. And the purpose of the bond is so that if you, the contractor, goes bad on whatever part of the job is yours, someone's going to pay for it. And they, they don't seem to be enacting those things, or they'll put them in place. And then they don't want to get the people to, to get them called upon. So it, there's something lacking somewhere, and I'm hoping that we can make better decisions on the way that this, this whole thing is being run, and this is spending of the money.
Jessica?
Well, I'm Jessica Holbrook. I am the vice chair this year. I also have the daunting, scary task of chairing Finance Committee this year. So certainly, a lot of my concerns are going to, and questions and thoughts are going to kind of revolve around the money aspects as well. This is my, my fourth year here. And pretty much every year, and I followed things before that as well, but, you know, every year I've been here, we, Scarborough has continually kind of become a big loser in funding, whether that's through municipal revenue sharing, whether that's through school funding. So, and it always comes at the 11th hour as the final answer of what we're going to not get, or how much we're going to get. And so my questions are, what can we do to improve that situation where we have already come to the point of, every department has a budget, now we're trying to get something in front of the voters, and we're not finding out until it's, you know, three or four days before it goes to referendum, which is also a mandate that we, you know, set out to do that with. And it's all last-minute stuff. So what can we do to speed that up so that we have a better idea of coming into building our budget as a town, what we will or will not receive for those fundings, whether it's school funding, whether it's municipal revenue sharing, whether it's our roads, we haven't been receiving our funding for our state-owned roads, and Scarborough's had to sink what is normally our budget for our portion of roads into those state roads. And that is going to soon be a huge issue for us. Obviously, like I said, if we're spending our money on state roads, we're not maintaining ours. So how can we improve these things so that we know sooner? Certainly, I would love to know, I've never really had a good answer to that, what is our recourse? I mean, every year again, we kind of sit back and say, well, you're not getting a million, you know, you're getting a million less, or, and I can understand that. But we are vastly coming to the point, we aren't getting anything. So do we have a recourse to this? You know, what can we do? I, I think we pay as a town and a community a lot of money into these county taxes and state taxes and so forth, and our citizens do. And what's our recourse? Why, you know, we keep paying into it? How do we recoup some of that? Especially when, you know, again, we have a lot of things that are, especially with the schools, they're state mandates, they're things you have, we're required to offer. They, they come with no funding. So again, you know, what can we do to either, or at least, the very least, what can we do to be more conscious of mandates as they come down that come with no funding? I guess I want to point out, I'm not sure, some of you new councillors may not be aware of this, but the municipality itself, we, as a finance committee last, last year, had asked the manager to give us a five-year trend. And as a municipality, we've reduced our spending over a five-year period by 2%. So we are actually spending less as a town. Unfortunately, the bad news is, is because of all those cuts and all of the, the lack of revenue that's come in, as a town, we have picked up 22%, I believe, somewhere right in there, that we're up in a five-year trend for our school and county. All of this money is still coming, I mean, again, it's coming out of these, you know, our citizens' pockets. And, you know, as far as the municipality goes, I, I won't speak for the school, I don't, and I don't look at their things, they get to play with their money how they wish. But as a municipality, we've gone to what we can. We're, we're at this point of no return. We have not hired, we have not, I mean, we're working off of the same numbers with police departments, fire departments. There's nothing left to give. We have nothing more to think into our schools. So again, the magic number is here is, you know, what, you know, we need help, and we need your guys' help. Because obviously, we're down here, we're, we're not up there. So, so that's my speech.
Bill?
I'm, I'm new, I just got elected a month or two ago, I guess, Jean Marie and I did. I campaigned on budget responsibility and control and predictability. And there were two incumbents running against us, and we won big. So the voice of, of our town was, was heard pretty clearly, that greater budget responsibility. And last year, the thing that put this council behind the eight ball was a dramatic reduction in revenue sharing. I looked at the history of revenue sharing, the main municipal association write-up, and there's just no question that that's our money. That, it, it's intended as a means of having one non-regressive revenue source. Otherwise, we're, we are dependent upon a regressive revenue source. We have an older town, we have an average median income of 50,000, so that when property owners get hit with substantial 22% in the last four years, that, this is against fixed incomes, a lot of people. It's, it's devastating. So, so to me, the, Augusta can't balance its budget by pushing a tax increase on us. It's unfair. We are going to act as the voice of this community. We are going to lobby. We are going to make it be known that this is money that we're entitled to. It's what makes us have the ability to control our affairs. We can be stable, we can have stable budgets, because then we can say, no, we're not going to do this or do that, because we can control the income side, the expense side. But the income side has, has been a real problem. So we obviously want to know if your view is that, at the end of the day, would you vote to take our money and pass it, pass it on to us? We honestly, we want you to just tell us, because we're going to be watching. But we, and, and it certainly makes sense that the sooner we can get our answer, the sooner we, I completely agree with Vice Chair's comments, that at least then we can try to organize a manner of being able to make do with the situation that's presented to us. So, thanks.
All right. I'm going to, I thought we were just going to go around and introduce ourselves. The points I have are, here we have, in Scarborough, we, the, the people of Scarborough pay quite a bit in income taxes to the state. And it seems like every year that goes by, we get, we're going to be getting less and less and less. You know, this town, even though they think in Augusta that it's an influent town, and there's a lot of money here, there's still a lot of just regular working people that don't make a lot. So, and then we keep, we're continually asked for more and more and more. DOT, for an example. Town of Scarborough takes care of all the roads now, plowing, salt and sanding, a lot of ditching work, things that need to be done that the DOT just won't, won't do for us anymore. We had three, three roads, three state DOT roads, that Town of Scarborough actually went in and repaired them to a higher standard than the state. And the state said, I'm sorry, you know, these roads aren't high on the priority list. What's happened is you've got North Sarko and other communities that have continuously built, built up their communities. And all these communities travel through Scarborough. Gorm does, you know, like I said, Sarko, Old Orchard Beach, they've built up, and they're sending their traffic through here, yet they say, no, we're not going to give you any help on fixing these roads. You know, reimbursements, less and less all the time. We're asked to build our own schools, and, and, you know, it was a large number of people that came out and voted, said, yes, Scarborough does need new school, after repeated times of it being voted down. Finally, the citizens of Scarborough saw the need, and once again, no help from the state. Okay? With the DOT, then they had the nerve, whether it's Governor LePage or how it happened, decided to say all of a sudden that they're going to take the truck registration fees away from Scarborough. Another, you know, with Bill, working on these roads and fixing them, that's something that we really depended on, needed. You know, it may not have been a lot, I believe, Tom, was it a million?
Forgive me, I don't remember the numbers. Luckily, it didn't go through, but it, that was a proposal laid in the process.
No, but I'm just saying, this is what we're threatened with all the time, loss of, I'm sorry, I didn't put that right, maybe I'm getting a little emotional about it, but it seems like every time, there's something that's being tried, you know, they're trying to take away something that the town needs so that we can make this all work. Because we can't keep going up on the taxpayers. They're, they're not happy as it is. And it may, it may be out of our hands, but what I, what I'd like to hear tonight is, if Scarborough's sending all these tax dollars in an income tax, where's it all going? And why are we being told that it's, you know, our revenue sharing is going to be lost, it'll go down? What are we spending this money on? And why, you know, I meant, it's, it's pretty much to the point where I can see someday in the near future that Scarborough will be probably receiving very little, if any, funds from the state. And if that's the case, what's going to happen is a, if I'm still on the council, is, is going to have to be diminished services somewheres, because there's a lot of folks that can't afford the taxes to continue going up. We had a circuit breaker program here, running in Scarborough, to help out people that really needed to pay their taxes. And of course, the whole thing in Augusta, you know, that was lost, and, and so that affected our program also. So we're trying to figure out how we're going to reestablish it. But when you lose all these funds, like I said, you're going, in the, in the school, they, they expect a certain standard, I hear, time and time again, the school needs the money, the school needs the money. Well, you know, if there's only so much money to go around, the school needs it, that means it's going to come out of the fire department, police department, Public Works, and right here at Town Hall. People are going to be going home. And it's just, it's a threshold that the taxpayer is going to, this has always been told over and over again, and back, way back with Tabor, when they had the, the referendums on table, there's a threshold that the taxpayer can take. And to me, and you can ask the rest of the councils, I think we've pretty much reached it. So, like I said, if you, in Augusta, if people in Augusta keep passing these unfunded mandates for the school, which I've heard of some, some of that may be happening in the future, there's very little for us to do. Well, the one I heard about, maybe you can answer this, was, I heard that there may be a bill coming forward for preschool, and, you know, a funded preschool. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. Maybe one of you can enlighten me on that.
Senator Millet's the Chair of Education.
Pass that to you.
No, that, maybe this is just gossip, but this is what I heard, this is what I was told, so. But that's basically my, my grief about what's been going on. And anything that, you know, you can do to help the town is greatly appreciated.
So let's hear from these candidates.
Can I, can I actually just, since the school, the unfunded mandate and the school fund kind of rose to the top of those comments?
Right.
Maybe I can address that, being the chair, co-chair, actually.
Okay.
Why don't we take, actually, what I'd like to just jump in is, it might be helpful, part of this is sort of broadening and keeping the communication. So I'd like to, once we do our introductions, I'd like you guys to know what committees we serve on, what, that's, because that's where we have most of our, and you could, you're in a kind of a good place, that all three of us serve on different committees, and so we have certain committee areas that we have more influence on, if you will, than others. And then there's the broad votes that we all get to have, that we can also talk about those. But it might be helpful for you to know, to identify who's the expert on different areas. We don't have the whole legislature covered on our five committees, but we do have a pretty good...
Right.
You're a good chunk.
And it would be helpful for you to know who to reach out to on different, yeah, with Heather, we would have more so. So why don't you start with that, and then you can, and I'll tell what I do, and then we can start in on trying to respond, I think.
Okay.
So do you want me to just say what I'm on and then not respond to anything?
No, go ahead. I'm sorry, I just want them to know where it's coming from.
Okay. So Rebecca Millet, and I am co-chair of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee, and I also serve on taxation. So there's a lot of these comments that were made that touch upon some things that, that I have been working with. I will say that because I chair education, the time that I spend in taxation is minimal at best, because oftentimes, we're meeting at exactly the same time. But I, just like today, I was running in between the two committees, trying to be at the right place at the right time for those really critical discussions. But I would like to comment a little bit about some of the stuff that's going around education. Last year, with the budget, obviously, as you all know, the governor proposed a budget that was a significant cut to public education. And in the Education Committee, the majority of us reported out to the Appropriations and Financial Affairs Committee that we found that to be unacceptable, and that not only did we want those cuts to be restored, but that we wanted the state to continue to move towards the 55%. And if the state could not do that, then none of the monies that they had allocated towards special projects should be funded, should go to those, that funding. The Appropriations Committee heard that message quite clearly and negotiated a budget that, that did exactly that. One of the things that we also said is, we did not agree with the transference of retirement costs to local districts. Unfortunately, during negotiations, that was one of the things that, that fell to the negative. But when they transferred those retirement costs to districts, they also funded the transferring of that cost. So net-net, Scarborough actually did receive increased funding, but it received the increased funding after the budgets were passed. And so we actually tried to put a bill through at the very last minute to allow the districts to take that money and use it for the coming, for the coming year. Unfortunately, it did not have enough support, and it didn't pass. So there is, there should be a pot of money now in your contingency or carryforward balance that can be utilized for this coming year. My hope is, is that the Appropriations Committee will remain true to the language that's in the budget, to continue moving the state's share towards 55%. The message was heard loud and clear by pretty much everybody, and it had very strong support. So I, I expect that that will continue.
Just incidentally, do you know where we're at? We're not at 55. Do you have...
No. We're, we're something like 46 or 47%.
That's what I thought.
I would, I, don't quote me on that, I'm not too sure exactly what it is, but it's not, it's under 50. But, but there, within the budget that was passed last year, it was, it gave us various, I think it was a 1% increase for each year. Now, as we are all aware, as you've all seen and commented on, the budget process every year results in new decisions. But I can assure you that as co-chair of the Education Committee, I'm speaking very forcefully for, on behalf of help school funding. I served on the school board in Cape Elizabeth for six and a half years. I was in your shoes, going, why are we not finding out our final numbers until April or May, when they know we have to go to referendum? And we have actually had this conversation in Augusta about, is there a way that we can improve on this process? My impression is, only after having served in Augusta for a year, that's probably reflective of whatever the budget that's been proposed by the governor, and how, and wherever the legislature is in terms of their approach. You pretty much could not have gotten more diametrically opposed positions, from what the governor presented, to what a majority of the legislator really wanted to see happen. And because of that, it took a very long time to get people to move to a middle ground. And unfortunately, it meant that the, the information just wasn't getting to anybody in a timely fashion. But I would say, I remember very distinctly, under a different administration and a different legislature, we were still waiting. And I'm not sure I know what the answer is, but I, we do have representatives of MSNA, the Main School Management Association, the Main School Superintendent Association, in our committee room all the time, and we're always having that dialogue about, what can we do? One of the things that I thought of when I was on the school board is, you know, do we change the nature of our process here at the local level? Do we somehow try to move our discussions up earlier, not earlier, later? And then, and then the voting until the fall? I don't, it's, it's really a conundrum. But I'm very much aware of it, I, I know your pain, I've lived through it many, many times. It's like Groundhog Day every year, you're pulling your hair out, going, how can we be responsible? Um... responsible? One of the things that I did do when I, my first year there, was to get a law passed that averages out state valuation for each community. One of the things that has, the biggest thing that has an impact on how much a community gets is the state valuation. It's not student enrollment, it's not new mandates or anything like that, it's just simply the valuation number. And how it relates to everybody else's valuation numbers. So you can get some really wide variances, not because of your own community, but because of other communities. So we did pass a bill that we'll slowly put in place, because we didn't want to do it all at once, it will cause some drastic changes if we just said immediately it's going to be a three-year change. But we are going to be gradually working up to a three-year average over the next couple of years, to hopefully smooth out some of these wild variations in state valuation. So that should be able to give at least the school districts an ability to forecast out a little bit about how much money they will be getting because of evaluation. Unfunded mandates. We are getting a report this session on unfunded mandates.
I have it right here. Well, this is on the municipality. I don't know if there's a separate one for schools?
Yes, there's going to be a new one. It has not been released yet. The Department of Education is due to report it out on January 10th. And so the education committee hopefully will be getting it at that time. Recognizing that there has been a change in leadership in the Department of Education, I'm not going to be, you know, we're not going to hold them strictly to that date, but we certainly hope that that's the case, and then we will be reviewing it. And we have the ability to report out a bill from this evaluation, if we need to make any changes. We are not allowed to pass any new unfunded mandates unless we get two-thirds vote of the legislature.
All right.
Okay? If this, if the education, the education committee feels that a new program is really important, it needs to attach funding to it. And it needs to go through appropriations and be put into the budget. Otherwise, it cannot happen unless there's two-thirds vote. So the message is very loud, it's always at the epicenter of any of our discussions. We have a number of people who've been on school boards, or our teachers, or administrators, who are very well aware of the demands that are already on our schools. So we're very cautious about adding anything new. Having said that, there is a discussion about early childhood education. Because the evidence that's out there right now, through brain science, is very clear. The biggest bang for your buck is the earliest years of a child.
True.
And one of the things that we struggle with as a state is that only 26% of our kids are being given these opportunities. And if they fall behind in those years, we have, we are, it's almost next to impossible to get that child to catch up. We are also, at the same time, looking at the funding formula, EPS formula, and are likely to make changes to it. And one of the things that we're talking about is including in that funding formula some additional support for early childhood education. And there actually is money for early childhood education. It's currently being provided at the same rate as the K through, the K through two rate. So if Scarborough has an early childhood, all they have to do is count the pupils and put it in to the state, and they actually get funded for that. So that's actually not an example of an unfunded mandate, because there is funding currently available.
Fully funded?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
What's the likelihood of that EPS model being, funding formula actually being reworked anytime soon?
Well, if you had asked me this morning as I was driving up to Augusta, I would have said none, because I was hearing rumors that people were pretty down on it. And then by the end of our meeting today, we had unanimous consent that we want to move forward.
Interesting.
So we're going to do something. What it is, it's still unclear. There's very strong support for doing more around early childhood. There's very strong support about addressing the economically disadvantaged students. And there's strong support for somehow developing a model that will provide quality professional development. And we're kind of working around, what does that actually mean? Because we're aware that professional development can also be a complete waste of time.
Yeah, I don't mean to minimize the importance of those three things you just mentioned, but how about equity of the distribution method of equity back?
Well, that's the difference. That's not the EPS formula, that's the allocation methodology.
I beg your pardon.
And that's a separate, and that's, but it's been part of our discussion, and we, so there was a report done by Pykis and Associates, and they actually said that what we have currently doing in Maine is pretty good. And as Representative Cornfield said today in our meeting, the fact that all of the rural districts think that the urban districts are getting more money, and the urban districts think that the rural districts are getting more money, is probably an indication that the system is balanced, because everybody thinks they're not getting enough money. We looked at the possibility of changing the allocation methodology to include an income factor, and that actually made it worse. It didn't, it didn't make it more fair, it made it less fair.
Yeah, my observation, I'm not looking at how we compare to others, I just know what's happening to us. And with a few exceptions.
We lose about a million every year.
We're going to be losing it at a pretty predictable clip. And that's all I know.
Well, again, you have, hopefully, you have actually, you actually probably got more money this year. It just didn't come with that original notice because of the way the budget transpired. And again, if you can hold our feet to the fire, to make sure that we continue to move to 55%, that's going to make the big difference. It's not, it's really not about allocating at this point. It's about state meeting the expectation of funding education at 55%. You know, we base it, we base allocation on valuation of property. And the majority of the country, the majority of states throughout the country do the same. There is no magic allocation formula.
But the difference with Maine and northern New England generally, I think, is that we're almost entirely reliant with the property tax as our other funding source locally. Whereas the rest of the country, many times, local governments have other funding streams, whether it's a local option revenue, sales tax, or some other more robust.
So that gets me out of the realm of the education committee. Okay? And then that puts me into the taxation committee.
Terrific. Well, I wanted to know where we all come from.
She's kind of covered.
Oh, well, so, yes. So the first thing that we can do is move the state to 55%, because we're not even where we're supposed to be at. And then what kind of flexibility do local governments have in finding alternative revenue streams to fund their 45%? That's.
Educating Maine kids into a pool, and the state will fund 55%. That's not to say that Scarborough's education costs will be funded at 55%.
That's correct. And that's the painful truth.
And ours is, I think, something in the mid-teens, 16, 17%.
Cape Elizabeth is at 7 or 8%.
Right. So I just wanted to make sure everyone understood, when we're saying 55, we will never see anything near that, it's statewide.
There was a very conscious discussion over a seven-year period of time, back in 19, early 2000s, of when this whole EPS model was developed and the allocation methodology was developed.
It was all on the heels of that same 55% mandate, as I recall.
Well, the discussion around, how do you, so if, so once, once they developed a model to say, this is what education should cost, then they had to then say, how do we know how much we give to each community? Recognizing that not every community has the same ability to pay. Okay, so while I understand that Scarborough has residents that aren't wealthy, or are middle-class, and lower-middle-class, and poor, which is the same for any community, Cape Elizabeth is the same, South Portland is the same, we have a diverse group of residents. And, but there are other communities that have higher proportions of poorer or lower-middle, lower-middle-class. And so if we believe that's important for all children in Maine to obtain a strong education, how do you allocate the state money that is supposed to go to education? And they decided that it had to be through property valuation. Now, there's a recognition that there are communities who are high in property value, but not necessarily in wealth, and how do you accommodate for that? Well, one of the ways that they do that is within the funding formula, there is additional funding for students who are economically disadvantaged. So for every student who receives free and reduced lunch, they get an additional 0.15% of the normal student rate, as a way to kind of boost up the funding that goes to that district to help. And there are some, there's small district adjustments, so there are a number of adjustments that have been made to try to address that. There's also Title I monies, which has not been working 100%, but we're going to be dealing with that when we, when we review the EPS model. The other, the other discussion that we've been having in education is that, and what came out of the report is that the circuit breaker is really an effective way of helping to further adjust for the inconsistencies within a population of a community. So if you're high in property value, but you've got a number of people who are really struggling to deal with their monthly cash flow, the circuit breaker program will be there to boost them up, while the rest, while the community as a whole is still being said, you have an ability to pay. Well, not everybody in my community has an ability to pay, we need to, we need to look out for that. And so we are going to be addressing that in education through a bill, but then we're going to re-refer it to taxation. Well, I'll actually get to then work on it again to my colleagues in that committee. So that's kind of where we're going.
Can I interrupt, or take a second here? I think I heard Amy say that you had to leave. Do you want to have the floor? Because I'm not leaving until we're done. And I'm looking at the clock, and I really think, given everything that we've heard, it would be great if we could, you know, you had a chance to have the floor, don't you think, before you have to go?
Yeah, I'm so sorry, I did not know.
No, that's all right.
Well, I mean, I just, I have to be down the road at 7:30 or so, but I mean, I can be a few minutes late, it's not. But thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Well, I just did, I did want to pass these out. They're preliminary reports. One is on a mandate working group, and it's unfunded mandates to municipalities. So this might be something that, and again, it's a preliminary report, but you might find it interesting reading. I can't say, I've read it myself yet, but. And then they also had a nonprofit tax review task force, which Rebecca might know something about. And this is, again, a preliminary report for them. So those are going to be a couple of tools in the toolbox that hopefully you'll have. Maybe not for this budget season, but for the next budget season. And, yeah, I don't know too much about taxation, because I am not on tax committee or appropriations. You all know probably that I did work on completely overhauling our tax system as part of a working group that was sort of private and became public, and that was.
That was the gang of the.
Yeah. That unfortunately didn't get very far. You know, it's my personal belief that until we do something radical like that, the state's going to continue to have these issues in funding. And of course, my recommendation, in terms of when you're putting your budget together, I know Jessica was asking essentially, but is to plan for the worst and hope for the best. So right now, as it stands, there has been an increase in revenue, but there's also at least $120 million deficit already in Department of Health and Human Services. So when Richard asks, or James asks where the money is going, that's where the money's going, unfortunately. And it's also my opinion that Cumberland and York County pretty much subsidize the rest of the state of Maine. And from my work on the Labor Commerce Research and Economic Development Committee, I can tell you that it's, it's just sad, I guess, that our state is in the state that it's in. And, you know, we have seen a huge decrease in a lot of our, our big industries. And we've seen a lot of, you know, we've just had 200 people laid off in Lincoln, which was kind of the crown jewel in the pulp and paper industry in northern Maine, and now there are 200 people that don't have jobs. So I wish I had something happier to say, but it's, it's just, you can't share revenue that doesn't exist. And, and I know that we've had to tighten our belts on the state level, and you guys have had to tighten your belts.
Can I, can I ask something about? I know I come from a place of looking at the state budget, and I have to ask, you know, when we're weighing, giving breaks to corporations versus helping out the taxpayer, you know, we don't do a very good job, or haven't been as a state. I think we've been paying too much attention to so-called, I'll call it corporate welfare. And we need to be focusing more on the tax, the taxpayers, the real taxpayers of the state, and making sure that we make some, some switch there too, to help out the middle class. So where do you stand on that?
Well, the committee, over the summer and into the fall, that was tasked from the tax committee with reviewing tax expenditures, like you're talking about, and coming up with $40 million in savings, failed to do.
That's right.
Anything. So.
I was following that committee.
Unfortunately, I think what they found is that, you know, while you might call it corporate welfare, the reality is that if you take those tax benefits away, a lot of jobs go away. And so you risk that. And do we want to risk that? You know?
But have we, but have we, I know there was some talk of, last year, and I'm thinking of these pine, the pine tree districts, or whatever the heck they call them, business districts, of, and I'm a business person, and I have no problem, you know, giving businesses, you know, tax credits, whatever, they need to do, as long as they're creating jobs. But there was some talk that it didn't seem like they were very effective and weren't creating the jobs. So is something being done in this session to look at that and make sure that we are creating jobs? Because, yeah, we need jobs in this state.
Yeah. I think, I mean, that's something that's ongoing, sort of review, and the problem is that it's, a lot of those things are really hard to get firm numbers on. And, you know, there's a lot of anecdotal sorts of things, but I think that there's also, you know, been talk about a proposal to create some special tax zones in some of the poorer, more rural areas of the state. And hopefully draw industry there, so that people will have jobs and they won't be dependent upon state resources.
And the only reason I go down that is because, again, looking at Scarborough, because that's why we're here, is, you know, this, I was in high school, so many years ago, when they started the revenue sharing. And revenue sharing was created as an offset to the new, the new state income tax, which was implemented, I believe, in the late 60s. And revenue sharing was a way to help the regressivity of the property tax. And again, my concern as a, as a town councillor is the regressive nature of the property tax, because we do have high valuation, I'm a real estate broker, and we do have high property valuation in the town of Scarborough. You can't get a, you can't buy a decent house for under $200,000 in the town of Scarborough, to be honest with you. But you've got a lot of people on fixed incomes who are, you know, have lived in Scarborough forever, and their incomes are such that they can't afford the regressive nature of the property tax. So, you know, I'd like to see us, I, in an ideal world, our revenue sharing would be the way it should be, and the legislature would stop rating it, and school sharing would be at 55% like it should be, and, you know, whatever. And, and part of why, I just, I'm just hopeful that all of you can be looking at, you know, the big picture too, about, well, who is paying taxes and who isn't in this state? And is it? And is it fair?
I just don't understand why the 55% and the revenue sharing isn't respected for the law that it represents. Why is it just ignored and then treated like a default item that can be robbed to solve other tax problems? Why wouldn't the legislature and the governor just say, "Those are fixed. Those are commitments that have historically been made for good and sufficient reasons to spread a tax for the towns so it's less regressive?" And so now, it isn't a matter that the revenue isn't there to share, it's that the legislature and the governor doesn't have the courage to balance the budget based on the law. That's the way I see it.
I don't think we've ever reached 55% in the entire.
Very close. We were at 52% at one point.
Right. But it's never, what I'm saying is it's never been 55%. That was sort of a goal that was set out.
It's set in law, but it's supposed to be.
A citizen-initiated law, I might add.
Yeah.
So I don't get it, why any legislature or governor would think he can just take that money. It's stealing. It's just plain stealing because you're not willing to do the job that you've got, which is balance the budget. You can do it. There are revenue sources that are available to you that are not available to us. Our hands are tied.
And I suspect a fair amount of the, or some of the issue we find ourselves in at the state level is some of the recent tax cuts. I mean, revenues have gone down by choice, frankly.
Actually, our income revenues, income taxes are up. Income tax collection revenue is up. But not the rate.
But not the rate.
Yeah, you're referring to the cuts that were made in 2011.
Right. Undoubtedly, that has to have an effect on the state's ability to pay its bills.
Mr. Chair, can I jump in, too, and ask? One of the things that we didn't get when we sat down was how much time you allotted for this. And my, when I got the email, I thought it was, "Let's open a dialogue between the local and the state."
Right.
And one of the things that seems to be happening is this, we're getting into the real specifics of all of you becoming a subcommittee of, you know, the legislature. And I'm happy to do that in terms of communication over the course of the session through April, and if I'm elected again next year. I think it's excellent that you guys reached out to us. And I really think, for me, that's the big focus of tonight, that I had hoped to have an opportunity to, is to, you know, put faces to the names, open the channel between Scarborough and Augusta, which, you know. And I think we certainly, the three of us, have the message that revenue sharing is top. And that's why it's at the top of the handout that I haven't even handed out yet, because we didn't get to it. But I want to be conscious of the, a lot of the time that you folks have, because I still really haven't weighed in much. And I do have some handout and some things I want to say. But we could make it till mid, we could talk till midnight.
Oh, I'm.
But one of the things I wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that we all, you know, understood that we, what we want, and the three of us, one of the, the message I want to get is, when we go back up there tomorrow and throughout until April, the short session, one of the things that we'll be, I'll certainly be, speak for myself, I'm going to be telling my colleagues, Scarborough's pissed. They're really ripped that we cut their revenue. No, I'm not kidding. That kind of message resonates stronger than anything else in the State House. You get, you get, you guys represent your community. We really do. You were elected to represent the whole community. So you have a powerful voice with the three of us and with Heather. And we're going to take that message back, regardless of whatever else gets said, or how much we get into the weeds of the allocation and all the rest of it. The message that they'll hear from us loud and clear is Scarborough is damn mad, and they're not going to take it anymore. You want, you want the revenue cuts to stop, and you want the money back. And, I mean, that's the message I'm going to be getting back there. And that's, and to add to that, I, you know, I was part of the gang that put a lot of the revenue sharing back in, that finally did come through the budget, as were you. And Amy, I think, did vote finally for the, to override the governor's original budget, to override the second budget, rather, to put two-thirds of the money back. So what you have in the room with you is sort of preaching to the choir. From last session, we put as much money back, would have been a lot worse, the original budget. So we did put back some, not, I know that doesn't, you know, that's not all warm and fuzzy, but it did happen. And that's one of the political realities that those of us who go up there face, so that we, and I, so now that I have the floor, I would like to pass out these handouts because there's more, there is going to be legislation. The tax expenditure or loophole task force that Amy referenced was supposed to, that was a poison pill that was put into the last legislature, that if this work group didn't go forth and find $40 million of loopholes, guess what? It's going to come out of revenue sharing again. So that $40 million is sitting up there as a sort of Damocles hanging over you guys and us. And if, so what the, one of the proposals in the legislature that I've handed out here is just, the ink is still drying, yeah, is to find another way to fund that $40 million so it doesn't have to hit you guys, all the communities, that $40 million. That sword is still hanging up there. So we're, that's what we're dealing with up there. And that's why it's timely that we're meeting with you, and, you know, I'm hearing from Gorman's Westbrook, which I also represent. All the communities, all of us, all of the state are hearing from you, and you, and we should be. You're doing the right thing, in my, from my perspective, by having us here, by reading us the riot act, and, you know, you're the mouthpieces for Scarborough. So I think it's great that you're doing it. But the other thing is that, in the email, I think it was, you know, what are the legislative priorities? So I wanted to touch a little bit on that because, because I did go to some effort to put this together, and we have, I've bulletized what I think that, at least the Democratic priorities from my perspective are. Main care expansion or healthcare, that's going to be a big bill. That and revenue sharing, that's why I put those two first. Those are huge issues for everybody in the state of Maine, including residents of Scarborough. The main care ride system is presumably an issue. Nobody's mentioned it here tonight, but there must be Scarborough residents who have some concerns about that. So we're well, well aware of it. It's one of the first bills we'll be taking up. And Heather serves on the Health and Human Services Committee. So you have a pipeline directly to that committee through Heather, and I think that's terrific for the, and I won't speak for her, she's not here. But I think it's important that you understand that the biggest influence you can have is through the committee process. You can have the influence on the whole legislature, but the fact that you have education and tax, labor, commerce, research, and economic development, health and human services, and I chair the Environment and Natural Resources Committee, and I also serve on agriculture, conservation, and forestry. So any of the bills that are in front of any of those committees, you've got really strong eyes and ears looking out for Scarborough. But we also have the big issues of healthcare, revenue sharing, I should have put first, but as I know it's first in your mind. And I'm going to support this bill that will lock in the money for revenue sharing. The communities will get the revenue sharing. This will be a change in how that's done. And so I wanted to bring it to you. This is, it's pretty new. It's going to be contentious, like everything is up there. It's a two-party system, essentially, and we do fight. But ultimately, at the end of the day, at the end of a session, negotiations happen in the 11th hour that bring parties together to either pass a 50% or to, but to come up with an override. And that's what we'll be doing again. So you guys have to track us and hound us and whip us like bulldogs until April 16th. Really, April's going to be the, I think you need to. I mean, I think that's what your responsibility is and what I want you guys to do. I do. I think, I like hearing from people that don't agree with me, people who do, because I represent all of them, and I think that's what you're asking us to do. And I've heard from this committee, this council, that you want revenue sharing back. You want it back where it was.
Back to 5%? Is that what the proposal?
You want all of it back. This specific one is to cover the $40 million that's still hanging over.
At this point, I would be happy just not to be losing.
Exactly.
At least have, you know, the minimum of what we got last year.
Stability. We're looking for stability.
Revenue sharing was designed to return 5% of accommodation sales and income tax through a formula, system back. We're somewhere in the low 2% range. It's about 45% funded right now. So are you suggesting?
And it'll go lower if the $40 million isn't found. That's what this shows, these.
So when you say restoration back to prior year, or back to the legislative?
In this session, the best we're likely to get is to not have the, another $40 million cut from all communities in the state. That's the, that's the immediate concern. We did, I think we did a pretty good job of putting back two-thirds of the cuts that were to happen. That doesn't, may not sound great to you guys because you still had to make up the difference, but at least we did that much. And credit to the moderates in the middle that, you know, switched their vote and supported the two-thirds override. That's what got it there. And without that, we wouldn't have even what you did have. So that's, we're going to need, that's how it happens up there. Communities, the citizens, they need to reach out. Some people are very hardened on one side or the other, they're not going to switch their votes. Those of us who will switch their votes are the ones that need to hear from you. So I think, you know, that's what I wanted to get a chance to say, and I, again, I said in the email that I read, I thought you wanted to hear from us what our priorities were going to be. So you can read the rest of mine, I won't read them out, and then I've got the bills that I have in front of the.
Can I ask a question on timing? You mentioned April. So as I understand it, the governor's been very clear, he's not going to present a supplemental budget. Is that, is that correct?
That's what we've heard, too, yes.
So I presume, under Maine constitution, the legislature will have to consider that on themselves, and it must be, I presume, you're looking for a two-thirds veto-proof vote, given the governor's statements today. As near as I can tell, you're looking at an 80 to $100 million gap in this budget. And I can break out.
Probably more than that.
Yeah. $120 million just in HHS.
I'm not even counting that, frankly. So that really scares me. But at the same time, we had good forecast news from the revenue forecasting group. I think it was $28 million up for the first quarter. You know, if that trends throughout the fiscal year, it could be as much as $100 million. Maybe that's over-optimistic. And I know folks in Augusta will tell you, "Don't spend it before it's end." But nonetheless, I bring that up because it's almost insult injury. That's predominantly sales, that's sales tax revenue predominantly, isn't it?
Yes. Well, sales and income both.
Income is up.
Even better, to my point with revenue sharing, it's really insult injury. If you've taken that money away from us, and now there's excess money, why in the world wouldn't that be simply funneled back to us through the revenue system, revenue sharing system?
Because of the overruns in health and human services.
But forgive me for being so blunt, that's your problem, not ours. I mean, and I don't, forgive me for saying that to you. You're the one who's sitting in front of me. I guess that's the attitude. Maybe that's the takeaway, is that I appreciate you've got a challenging job to do, but so do we.
Yes, we do.
And don't make your problems our problems.
Because it's just transferring the tax to us. That's such a cop-out.
A great change order, one-on-one school.
It is, that's a just shift in the, yeah.
Well, again, we've heard that message. I don't think it's, in fairness to the three of us, we're here, we've heard it, it's not productive to sort of beat the horse with it. But, but I mean, we have to, again, I'll say again, I'm not saying that as a criticism. I think we have to hear, I think it's valuable that you reached out to us. I want to keep doing this. It is work for us. We're, we've had long days, starting at 4:00, 5:00 a.m., but it's, this is what we're here for, it's what we got elected to do.
How can we be helpful to the three of you moving forward?
Stay in tune with, find out, get access to the legislative website, look at the bills that affect, so you can take this, it's now Senate Paper 317, so right under where it says legislative document. If you go on Maine.gov and find the legislature and find these documents, you can track when the public hearings are, when the work sessions are. Involve yourselves, I know you know the process well, Jean Marie, so involve yourselves, starting now, educate yourselves as to when the public hearings are, because the public hearing, that'll be first. Not just this bill, other bills that affect.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I think a lot of it is just staying informed.
I would go to Augusta and testify to the Appropriations and Natural Affairs Committee, and testify to the Taxation Committee, and testify to what, to those committees that are going to be most impactful to the issues that you're dealing with. It does make a difference. If three people show up to testify in a bill versus 100, versus 200, the message, the impact of that message magnifies. So I would say, if this is really so critical, visit Augusta. I do believe that they are going to be holding public hearings on the, on the, I think it's just the recommendations of the Office of Policy and Management, which is basically another curtailment, proposed curtailment for this year. And in, within that recommendation is a curtailment of education of roughly $7 to $9 million. I can't remember.
Nine and a half, is what I heard.
Nine and a half? Right.
And I honestly don't know how Scarborough's affected by that, but.
Well, it's nine and a half out of the pot of education money. But, you know, again, just so you know, on the Education Committee, we will also be advocating our disway with that recommendation because that wasn't the charge.
Right.
The charge was to find efficiencies, it wasn't to put in place a curtailment. The only other thing I would say is keep an ear out for casino money to education. Casino revenues have gone up higher than they expected, and monies should be going directly to the districts. This is money that's not supposed to reside with the Department of Education, it's supposed to go to the local districts. We're, I'm trying to kind of keep track of it, but also if the questions kind of bubble up from the schools to the department, then they're going to be on notice that people are paying attention. So that can also go to help out with your, with your funding of your budgets.
Yeah. I just wanted to say one thing. I appreciate your service up there. I've been up testifying in front of committees before, and I'm like, oh my God, I thought being a council was bad. I mean, I think you guys pull some all night, it's start in the morning, and wow. So I appreciate your service. You know, being here in the local community, we hear from our constituents, and they have all these questions for us that we can't answer, you know, state questions. And I say, "Call your representative." You know, call, you know, they can tell you better. But from what I'm hearing, I had a discussion with Heather, you don't hear a lot from constituents.
Well, senators, we cover, we have 38,000, so we probably hear, percentage-wise, we probably hear from more, like in my case, three communities. So I don't know, I've never been a rep, I don't know what, from my perspective, we do hear a lot.
I hear a lot, no, honestly.
See, and that's the problem. They expect the councils to answer their questions. Where are all our state tax dollars going? And we can't answer that, you know? They want to know, I meant, like, we do pie charts, you know, when we're doing our budget, you know, the people in the, they want to see what, I mean, go online, but they just don't seem to do it and see what the money's being spent on.
It depends what you mean by lots. So for, to give numbers, I'd say I get an average of two or three phone calls a week, and probably depend, well, right now it's lighter, but in the heat of the session when we're in the thick of public hearings and work sessions, I probably get 100 or so emails a day around the district. And while, and also outside the district on specific issues. But within the district, it's probably 25 to 30 emails a day on issues that affect folks in the district.
I had 750 emails by the end of the session, and I was going.
Yeah, so we do hear from people.
And I was going through every day trying to clear, answer citizen contact, so there are people engaging, but it depends on the issue.
And it might be, it might be committee-related, so you all, like, you know, I hear, I don't hear as much from constituents of my district as, as much as I do from, about bills in my committee. So, but I mean, I feel like I'm pretty accessible. I mean, I, so feel free to give people my number, even, you know, I mean, because sometimes they just don't know how to even look up, or, I mean, I'm in the phone book, but I don't know why.
In terms of accessibility and dialogue and whatnot, I think on behalf of the council, I can offer these, you know, town hall facilities, should you want to, you know, have town halls or meetings or meet constituents, it might be important for you to get out, you cover three different towns, get out in each of those towns to make yourself accessible to them.
And we do.
Yeah, we do that.
And the turnout is very low.
Yeah, it's low.
I hear more via email than anything else. And I actually hear more from citizens than I do from work I do on committee.
Really? That's interesting.
I do. I have a very motivated population.
But we share, we share some constituents, so that's funny.
But the South Portland Capitol is a bit of a community is very, very involved and pays very close attention. So I get, I get a pretty substantial number of emails on some of the bigger issues like healthcare expansion, circuit breaker, the ride share program. I heard, I heard from a lot of people who are really struggling.
South Portland people.
Yeah. It was very difficult, so.
And that was a national, I mean, that, hopefully that's, but I hope, one thing I don't think that got out into the media very well is that, that was actually dictated federally. It wasn't a decision that the state decided to just go with, you know, one contract, but I feel like that, you know.
Well, it was a decision made in order to comply with federal requirement.
Exactly.
And that was, and that was the contractor selected, but one of the three.
Yeah. That's had a big problem.
Right.
Could I just ask a final question? The town clerk has shown me some new legislative district maps. So those boundaries have changed, and they appear to have changed pretty. and they appear to have changed pretty dramatically here, and I suspect the same is true in other places, although.
I lost some of Scarborough.
Oh, you too.
Yeah, but I got it, so.
How does, how does all of that roll out to the public and the electorate, so they know that they're in a new district? Do you have any sense of that? Well, is that going to be a local responsibility, to tell people, oh, all of a sudden, you're in a different legislative district than you were before?
That's a really good question, and we should, we'll ask the Secretary of State, because that's the department that should be dealing with that.
And when does that take effect?
It's right now.
Right now.
Well, no, in the next election cycle.
Which is starting now.
Which is starting. Well.
November. So the next election in November, anyone that's in a new district, in other words, somebody that's kind of.
It's in time.
Yeah, but it's.
Is when.
Yes.
It's now, because it.
The lines are done.
People will be campaigning.
Well, if you're campaigning, or candidates filing or whatever, they have to.
Yeah, I guess my point, I, I don't know the answer, so whatever help you could give would be great, and the sooner we can kind of get on that, the better. If we wait until September, it's probably going to be.
Yeah, Scarborough had to actually go, and we're going to have three House districts now that we'll be sharing with.
Well, one of the.
One of them's shared with Gorm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a good question, we'll definitely contact the Secretaries, what he has to say.
But there'll be fewer, fewer people in the second Senate district, right? There's, there's a larger share of Scarborough now going into what's considered Senator Boyle's seat now, yeah?
Yeah.
So it's, it changed all over the state, no, I mean, I don't think there was any district that didn't change.
If you think it was big here, I, I, I lost Westbrook and Gainbuxton.
Ten years, census.
Census, it's based on census.
Well, part of Westbrook, yeah.
Yeah.
So a few streets squiggled here and there in Scarborough, but I lost the whole town over there.
I know, that's what could happen.
Most, most of Scarborough, all of Gorm and all of Buxton make up the new large Senate seat, and then there's some of coastal, sort of my side of town, South Portland, Cape Elizabeth side that stays in Senator Mallett's seat.
That's right, and more on the committee.
Yes.
What was the whole idea of, of redistricting?
Well, it's just done by census, so.
It has to be done every ten years.
Yeah, every, yeah, and it's, it was a bipartisan process and approved all around.
It has to be done, because each district has to have a matching population.
Plus or minus five percent, I think it is.
Throughout the state.
Yeah, there's like a target number.
People move, like a lot of people are moving from Northern Maine to Southern Maine, it changes. Northern Maine districts got bigger geographically, and the Southern Maine ones essentially got smaller, to have the same thirty-eight or so thousand people in the Senate and roughly six thousand.
Well, Scarborough's population in just ten years changed considerably.
Exactly.
Is that what you said, Senate districts are thirty-eight-ish?
You might have, do you have the numbers off the top of your head? It's around thirty-eight thousand in, for Senate, and fifty-eight hundred or six thousand for.
Thirty-six, yeah.
For House voters.
Well, if, if someone could get back to me, we certainly want to do our part locally to get that word out, and just don't wait too late.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to wrap this up, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to us, and maybe we can do it again soon.
May I suggest just a three, four-minute recess?
Yeah, we can take five minutes.
We're not misbehaving.
Okay, this is part two of Scarborough Town Council Workshop, and the next subject will be goal-setting for the year. And I guess I'll start with Tom, can set the thing up, and then we'll start with Councilor Donovan this time, we'll go the other way.
So just a couple of introductory comments, you know, I'm pleased to help kind of facilitate this for you. Tonight I'll, I'll be your scribe, so I'll record your ideas up on the board here. I sent some suggested ways of moving through this process to you, and I'm sort of pleased to follow that, or another proposal if anyone has one, but what I've suggested is that you all come up with five or so goals. You can go around the room if you like, or you can exhaust them all at once, I'll get them recorded. I think you'll find fairly quickly that there's, the common phrase will be, oh, Bill had mine. So I suspect there'll be a fair amount of repeats, and, and that's to be encouraged, or not, don't be surprised. What I would suggest you do in that event is kind of add to it and further expand, if that's the case. So I'll record all of the ideas up, and we'll tape them up around the room, and then as a way of kind of ranking them, I can give you all a different color marker, and you can assign a number of votes. I suggest you all have ten votes at your disposal. You could assign all ten votes to one goal, if you think it's that important, or distribute them however you wish. And then we'll simply tally them up, and we can talk about the shortlist. I think ten is a reasonable goal to get to, but it could be a little more, a little less. Most importantly, they need to be your goals, and something that's attainable in the next twelve months or so. It's probably ten months by the time you take, start of the year and the end of the year out, so just be mindful of that. So I'm pleased, and as Chairman suggests.
Yeah, I, as you would expect, my number one was responsible budgeting. And the, the kind of the sub-points of focus under that were what we did tonight, be an advocate for the town with our legislative delegation, and do that on two levels, one would be the revenue sharing issue, and the other was giving towns flexibility to raise revenue through means other than property taxes. So those were the, two of the things we talked about. Employ, under responsible budgeting, employ conservative assumptions to avoid surprises. That was something that Amy actually said would appropriate. Limit both spending and the tax rate to an agreed percentage proportionally shared by all departments unless good cause shown. Analyze the capital cost budget to avoid budget bubbles, and advance plan for loss of revenue sharing. So we've got, we have risks ahead of us, I mean, I think the road to hell is paved with good intentions, but I would say there's a strong likelihood that we won't do well with our, our sources of revenue, which should plan for the worst, and sort of move in that direction. If we get surprised, that's wonderful, but I think the capital, long-term capital budget involves expenses that people are saying, well, I've been waiting, and I've been waiting, and I think you have to look at that, and just say, well, how are we going to get these bubbles so they don't pop up and, and create problems? Because given the trend of the last four years, and what I expect for the next several years, it's going to be tough sledding for all of us to deal with budgeting. Dialogue with department heads about ideas for productivity and economy initiatives. So that's, that's all sort of subheadings under responsible budget.
I think you're talking faster than he can write.
You are. So that was all captured under this notion of responsible budgeting?
Yeah, yeah.
So the, the three I was able to catch up to you on were conservative assumptions, you talked about having some definitive target for spending and tax rate, and advocate for ourselves, but also plan for the worst.
And some kind of review of the capital budget, so that we sort of can plan for dealing with risk factors of people's expectation that we're going to buy this or build that, when it may be very impractical that we can actually do these things. So I, I think people have a right, and they put all this time into long-range planning, to know that maybe things, maybe the world has changed a little bit. So that just, and then dialogue with department heads about ideas for productivity and economies. That was the last of those sub-points of responsible budget. The second item I have was senior services, work with community services to evaluate and ensure the adequate provision of senior services. I just came off a long campaign where I talked with a lot of seniors. I made an effort to speak to a lot of people who were not in the more affluent neighborhoods of our town, and, and I just think that a lot of seniors talked about, we pay a lot, but we don't get a lot, so, and I, but I don't know enough about it, so to me it's more exploratory. The third one I had was workforce housing, support initiatives to add flexibility to promoting workforce housing. And I really sort of picked that up in discussions with Jessica, the efforts have, are underway to try and introduce greater flexibility in the way in which we can advance it. This whole idea of just trying to be creative. Promote a business-friendly permitting process. And I say work with the town manager, the planning director, the code enforcement officer, and SEDCO to identify opportunities to advance that. I'm the SEDCO council representative, so I sort of have the opportunity to kind of work on that. And, and certainly, I think this is, as I looked at the two thousand twelve, eleven, and ten that we had, or thirteen, twelve, and eleven, that concept is, was in there regularly, so I'm not, I'm speaking to the choir, I think, in many respects, about people's perception of that as an important issue. And the last one was promote improved communication at all levels, and I really sort of picked up on that as important from Marie's, she had circulated hers, and that resonated with me, that I think we can do a great job together, because I think we see a lot of stuff eye-to-eye, and I think that if the more we talk and share and collaborate, I think the better job we'll do, and the more the town will say, they're out there working for us.
Could I just, just to catch you up on one thing, on the, on the budget side that you spoke about, I don't know, maybe this will be a different, you know, different year, but every year that I've been on, the council's always assigned either we're going to do zero, or two and a half, or three and a half percent, and that's it, to give, you know, the manager, the manager and the department heads and the school a heads-up. It totally didn't work at all last year. But we have to, you know, I think we should be serious about, are we going to go for a zero increase, flat, whatever? That's usually, we do that at this time. Did you have a figure that you wanted to set to that, or you didn't think about?
I didn't, but I.
Don't want to commit.
I do. Well, part of it is the unpredictability of revenue, that, because I was saying, you've got to sort of look at both.
Right.
That, that, and so assume the revenue is going to be low, and of course, we don't know what our, our assessment change is either.
Right.
So I don't know if I would, I don't know enough about the process, you guys have been around this much longer, that I'm kind of going to hold back making any sort of prediction, but I do think we should come to it as we learn more about the assessment side and the, and the revenue side, and where we want to make predictions. But on balance, it will be a conservative budget, and then if things work out better, okay.
Right.
You know, the wish list, I'm not afraid to add wish list stuff that was appropriate, and people got a steer and cut it out, but, you know, if it's there, it's there. But I'm thinking, I want, I think the budget, the, the tax rate should be no, no, zero to CPI for the next five years. That's, you know, but, you know, I don't know what all the contractual commitments are.
Well, that's why I said mind, keep the tax rate stable, because I don't know what to come up with for a number.
And I think, I think what we'll do is we'll keep going, we'll find out what that, what that actually means from all of us, and then we'll go back.
Yeah, exactly, but I'm glad you sort of picked up on that, because that's critical.
Jessica.
Just while I could, while Bill's got the floor, any other questions of Bill? And I really want to encourage this part of it, really the dialogue, and I'll try to capture those thoughts about any of his other thoughts to the senior services, workforce housing, or the business-friendly.
Has anybody kind of championed senior services, or sort of very knowledgeable about the level of senior services we have versus other communities?
I think ours is not lagging too much behind, but, you know, I meant, I hear a lot of, we're lacking a community center for them to come.
We're lacking facilities, probably not lacking programming.
Right, right, that's good, that's a good way to put it, yeah.
Yeah, I heard.
Because I don't mind sort of saying, maybe I end up being in the top five or ten, or whatever it is, but I wouldn't change the fact that I'd work on it.
Right.
I'd put time in and, and get educated from Tom and from others of you, and, and make an effort to sort of say, all right, this is a start.
Just to further refine that, maybe under that we'll say, you know, consider expanding programming, which doesn't necessarily need a, you know, four walls, that can be done, we've, we've got transportation available, we can bring people to different activities as well, and Ed, you've been involved for at least a year with the Senior Wild Program.
Can I add to your senior services, and we were talking about programming?
Yeah.
I don't think it's also just how many, you know, lunch bunches can we provide, and these, I, I think we also need to serve a purpose that hasn't been met, which is partnerships. There are a lot of folks that are in their homes that are, you know, capable of being in those homes, but could really benefit from, say, you know, some kind of a, you know, mentoring, or a volunteer program that will shovel, will sand your walkway for you, will, you know, those kind of smaller services. I mean, I know we offer sand to our residents at the Public Works Garage, but obviously, somebody that's eighty is going to have a hard time maybe picking up a five-gallon bucket and bringing it to their house, and that. So whether that's, you know, we have maybe partnerships with, I don't know, Eagle Scouts, or VIPs, or, but something.
Or service clubs, they've got service clubs.
In a word, partnership leaves a lot.
It's funny that you say that about the sand, because it was just in the paper last week. The VIPs, if the people call, will deliver free of charge, a five-gallon bucket for sand. The problem with it, which you were getting into, one's going to, they're going to marry them.
So how do you, if they're outraged?
The VIPs also have a thing where if people are going away, now, in this era of not trusting people,
A lot of.
there's a lot of people that when they go, they're going away, and their aunt, uncle, or whatever, and will make calls every day. And you tell the time, you know, what time of day to call them, and might remind them to take medicine, or just check it in, make sure they're all right. But the, the problem is getting it out there, if people understand.
We don't, do we communicate anything on our webpage?
Sure, your services has quite a, quite a robust, but the problem is a lot of that population may not be, you know, all that comfortable on the.
I was going to say, they aren't on the webpage.
Yeah, access.
A lot of it's getting out into the, the different communities where the folks are, so I wouldn't mind, I just added the word enhance and expand programming, just so we could make the ones we have even richer and better, or maybe consider expanding programming. And then I captured the thought of partnerships.
Jessica, still have the floor?
Yeah, let's go, we can go back to, well, I don't know that you have to flip a page, I'm also minor, pretty much up there, just with a few tweaks. Certainly, yes, affordable housing, I've been participating in that committee for quite some time. They, they had a few pieces that went out in the last few months, and again, coming down into the future, and we'd like to maybe look at that and address that, and again, the, the theme has always been, what can we do to encourage it rather than demand it? But in the same token, that work will be coming down the pike, so whatever we can do to help support that, whether that's, you know, through ideas from you guys, or, you know, partnering, you know, I'd probably be looking at, now that we have our new council seated and everybody's getting comfortable, probably a workshop-type setting, we've talked about that with you before, Richard, about getting together with ordinance committee and looking at what our ordinance are doing, what, what's the roadblocks, and what can we do to encourage the, these activities? We need these starter homes and, and first-time buyer homes, and then affordable workforce housing, so, you know, as those things, like I said, try to work through that quite a bit this year, and those ideas will be coming forward too.
What I think I hear you saying is really getting a bit more serious, I mean, we've talked about it, you and I have served on that committee for five years, for a while.
A while. So I, I guess, I'm going to go over real quick the ones that are already up there. Whatever, for me, it. Whatever, for me, and I've always said, we cannot have enough business in town. I'd be much happier if we had a 30% ratio, to be quite honest with you. I know we've done a really great job over the last year as far as taking some initiative to really be working with business. I know the planning board had an extra meeting one night because of some, something that transpired, so they had an extra meeting. I just want to add, maybe just advocate that we stay on that path, the whatever it takes mentality, that we need to keep those relationships going, we need to build on them, we need, you know, to continue to just build those good relationships and do whatever it takes. That's my note, is whatever it takes to grow our business base.
What does the group feel about that phrase? I mean, that kind of captures it all, whatever it takes?
Yeah.
Like, you see heads nodding?
I look at it as businesses' tax dollars in our community that pays for, you know, for every business we put up.
No sets for president.
It offsets our schools, it offsets our costs. I personally feel we can't have enough business in town, and whatever we can do.
Well, it's diversifies your tax base, which is more helpful.
So also, already on the board is the budget. Fourth year go around. I'm going to put that on the table as far as what I am looking for out of a budget this year. I'd love to say the pipe dream, it's flat, we're going to hold the line, it's probably unrealistic. I didn't have any kind of warmth after our workshop that we weren't going to lose probably more funding again this year. But certainly, I, for me, I have a maximum. I can tell you as a household that just got what, we will get for a raise this year. I know very well what the cost of living raises was and what they aren't. For me, I have an absolute max cap rate going out to the taxpayer of 3%. That their bill does not increase, the bill in hand is not more than 3% higher to the person paying it. Whatever that means, if that, I mean, hopefully, I, do you have a sense of all, I'm going to, how have we done with our growth? I know every year our tax base grows a little bit, and just by nature of value and whatnot, and new businesses coming in, we, I mean, I don't know what that entails. If we have some healthy growth in the pipe, if that's achievable, but my max cap is the three, 3% going out to the individual homeowner.
Yes, so that would be on tax rate.
Yes.
And not my mill rate, not that their bill is in three, more than 3% higher.
That takes into account, obviously, how much we need to raise to support local efforts, takes into account what we may lose or may gain, I'll be optimistic from the state, and takes, would take into account ultimately any changes in local valuation as well. That's not known until way late in the process, frankly, in July or August, once, after your budget's even adopted. Is there further thought about Jessica's suggested 3% as the target?
I think it's too high.
I think it's a little rich.
I think, I think it should be, it should be capped to the CPI. And right now, the CPI for the past 12 months is 1.2%, and that's going to change, but I think it should, I don't think it should be any more than 1.2% or the CPI for the previous 12 months. And even that, I think, is too high, to be perfectly honest with you, because our mill rate has increased 21.6% over the past four years. And the CPI has only gone up 8.3% for the same period of time. We can't continue to force the people to dig deeper and deeper and deeper into their pockets, come up with the extra money. We just have to change our method of budgeting, our method of running the government. And maybe it means that we run our fire engines another two or three years, and our police guards a little bit longer. We just have to be smarter. We just have to do it.
Well, I think certainly for me, I was just stating that that's my, my max height of, I mean, certainly, I'd be much happier if it came in at zero. I mean, I wouldn't not, I would not like it, but I, I just, again, this being the fourth rodeo, and I can see, I think we need to communicate with the school department. I appreciate that they have an 18-month plan, that there's things that they would like to have in their school system, but the reality of it is, there will probably come a day for Scarborough that we get no, no funding. That's just, it is what it is, and I don't really see that changing. And we're losing it by the millions every year. I don't really expect it personally. I don't think it's going to be any different this year. I think we'll probably lose another million or two this year.
Is there any predicting loss revenue at the school side?
I mean, the state does pass it by annual budget, so there's a two-year budget. How confident am I in that? Not very confident at all, because I don't think of, a year I've worked in Maine, 12 years now, where there hasn't been either a last-minute change right before they dock the budget, or mid-year curtailment, so...
I think it's literally been about a million a year we've lost since I've been here.
It's just when you find out.
Well, are we going to have to assume the teachers' retirement again this year?
We don't know yet.
Yes, but that's been provided for, so they say, you heard that tonight.
Well, last year, last year was.
Yeah.
And that's the issue, Bill, is there's no guarantees going forward. What happened last year...
It's almost like the spending rate's a little more important, because we're so at risk on the, on the income side, that we really have to almost say, if the spending rate were zero, then the likelihood is it could be true that the mill rate would go up 3%.
I can probably accurately predict that we would need to be flat-funded on spending to meet 3%, much less 1.2%.
See, we did that last year. We capped increase in spending roughly 3%. And the school and the town came pretty close. The school was a little bit above, but the town came in, actually, the town came in on...
Under, well on.
Yeah, we were, we're down on the municipality side.
But the tax rate, the tax rate went up over 7%. So we have to focus, we have to focus on what's going out to the people.
Yep. So certainly, that was my point, that, I mean, if the school needs to readjust their improvement plan to push it out some in order to accommodate this, then that's something that needs to be addressed.
Should that be a theme under budget, some further, maybe advanced work with the school board finance committee?
Say it again, huh?
To Jessica's point, the council does this every year, and every year, there's a very specific number. And I send it to the superintendent.
And it comes back.
He's the first one that gets it.
I remember the year he gave us like a 15% increase at the first crack of it.
Maybe there needs to be a better direct dialogue between the school board members on the finance committee and the town's finance committee early in the budget process.
I would agree with that.
Yep.
So, and it might be important enough to add that as an important theme.
Well, I don't see any reason why you can't tell them right up front that what we want is, we don't want to increase the mill rate, or we don't, or we're going to increase the mill rate no more than, whatever, 1.5%, 3%, whatever it is.
I think Tom can certainly deliver the message to the superintendent, but I feel equally capable of the three of us delivering the message to the school finance committee. I would, I just think that if they understand how strongly we feel about it, and how ultimately we're not budgeting, but we just, it, obviously, there's, if we really get creamed revenue-wise, we might be going, oh, well, I guess I could live with this. But let's assume that we're going to be tough on the, on the spending, and it's only going to be 1%, 2%. Like you said, it's going to be closer to 1% or 2% than 3% or 4%. Because I would be, I just couldn't vote for a budget that was 3% or 4%. I mean, that just would drive me crazy to think that on top of the 22%, you can add another 4%.
Yeah. That's the problem.
Everybody in town said that, told me that. It was such a dominant issue. Go to the door and say, hey, what do you think?
Right. My taxes are too high.
90% of the comments I got were that. And then a few, you know, miscellaneous about other stuff. It was so dominant.
The only problem with sending a figure to the school department is whatever happens at the state end goes back to bite us in the rear end.
Yeah.
Well, they...
Right.
I mean, yes, we should be able to...
Make it down another 5 bucks.
But we can't.
But we also need to be communicating to the taxpayers in town what's going on. And I don't think that as a council, we've done a very good job with that, because people, and again, Bill and I having knocked on doors, people were blaming this and that, and I'd have to refocus them back on, there is a bigger picture here. There's a bigger picture here. I think once people understand that, I mean, we aren't going to fix it this year, but at least I think it's important that people's voices are heard, and the more people speak up, the more effect they have.
One thing that I've, excuse me, one thing that I've brought up every year is the fact that one of the things the town does not do, that it doesn't really cost them any money, is when your tax bill goes out, the postage that goes on it is good for up to six pieces of regular paper. So we have got a venue there to get all information out.
That's true.
The only thing, the, whether you want to call it the only thing or the thing that it does cost is the time to put it together.
Right.
But that's a lot less than the postage, and the postage is going out already. So we've got an avenue to get all the information out twice a year.
That's a great point.
And I don't care if it's to do with dogs or burning permits.
Right.
Anything you want, and...
Are you 65 and older and need somebody to sand your driveway? Certainly utilizing...
One of the things that always aggravated me...
Message from the council, message from the chair, message from the town manager. Here's, here's what's...
Here's what's going on.
He needs that, yeah.
Because one of the things that I don't, I still don't even understand here, part of my business was septic, okay, septic installation. And the last town that I lived in, it was 100% septic. Do you think the town sent out something to tell people how to take care of it?
No.
It's so simple to take care of it, a pumping a year, but instead, they're trying to jam Riddex and all this other stuff up your nose. No.
Jim, I got to try to keep going here. No, I'm saying, we got to get, it's getting late, and it's still getting, so Jessica's got to finish up.
Yeah.
Jim, I captured your thought.
What are you going with the gavel?
I'm going to give you, you know...
Jim, I did capture your thought. Under improved communication, that's the external piece. And I think Bill was talking about more kind of internal among the council.
Thank you.
So maybe we'll, let's park this budget issue in the number, but I really want to insist that you come up, you give me some definitive targets, so I can push that down to my departments, and we can send that to the school.
Let's get through, let's get through this, and then we can name a number, we'll go around again and name a number, but Jessica can...
I have two things I wanted to add that weren't on the list already. I want, and I know we, you had talked, actually touched briefly about it when we first were sitting down, but the outreach to the citizens for the FEMA flood maps, and what that's going to do as far as what that impact is to them, whether we're hosting at the fire barns or here at town hall, but, you know, as much as we possibly can outreach for those folks, and what that means to them and the processes there.
You know who we could use? Southern Maine Area Agency on Aging, spit it out, Jay Marie. They have a volunteer program, and that would be great, something to get them to help us do, is go out even to people's houses and talk to them.
And I'm going to be honest with you, I don't even know with the flood maps, what that, I mean, I think the first year I was here, they talked about it, and then they pulled it back and pulled it out, and then pulled it back, and I don't even know what that means at this point.
Because they get a lot of outcry.
So even just as myself, as, I think for the council, it would be beneficial to have something, just to...
That's the point, yep.
I know it means something, I know it means something bad, but what it is, I couldn't tell you.
Lot of money for some people.
Well, it's an issue we need to be concerned with. Potentially, it decreases land values. It certainly decreases the potential for development on property, and therefore, potentially, its value.
Right.
So there's, there's potentially some huge implications.
So to be informed, I guess, is the best thing I can say.
Good thought.
And then my last thought was, piggybacks into historic preservation, which was from our last one. I would ask my fellow councilors, there was a one year, this was an ad hoc committee, I've been a member of that committee, I can tell you, the work was a lot more than I had anticipated, especially on the research side, trying to dig through old records and whatnot. So we will be asking for an extension of that committee, and hopefully, we can support them in that. So I guess it's just, it's historic preservation, you know, as I said, supporting them. They will be coming forward here in the next couple of weeks with, they've finally finished trudging through all the town records, there is a shortlist that they're going to be presenting shortly here. The next phase for them is going to be what we would like to do, and they'll be looking for direction from, from each of us as a council. So again, if I just ask that we continue to support these efforts, the list is disheartening. I'm here to tell you, it's a very short list of what's left that's significant here in town. So I think this is a very important piece.
Jessica, I, so I just had renewed committee, just so I can continue its work, but it sounds like you're ready for kind of an action plan. You identified what needs to be preserved, now we need to figure out how to do it.
Yeah.
Is that a fair way?
Certainly, I know our intent when we informed them was to have this more as a, as a two-step process, what is there, what's left, and what can we do, much like with the affordable housing, to encourage it to stay that way. I don't expect that charge to change. Certainly, that was never my intention when I brought it forward, to, you know, make it so strict or stringent here in town that, you know, your color of your house needs to be this and that and the other, but certainly, you know, you know, direction from us of how we would like to, you know, there's a lot of options, there's, I could probably go on for a couple of hours about all the different ideas that that committee's kicked around, but, but yes, certainly, just to support those efforts of trying to, you know, maintain what's left. And that's it for me.
Jim?
I agree with everything up there, and the only thing that of importance, of more importance to me, is a responsible budget, which I'm not going anywhere near that. Sharing of services within the town, I do know that if some time was spent lawn mowing, trees, plowing, some of these things that if they're, if they're sent to private businesses can be done possibly for a lot less money.
So, I'm sorry, I wrote down, the first thing I heard was sharing services, but what I thought, I heard you just say privatization.
Yep.
Maybe those are two different...
Combination of both.
Okay.
If they can both be looked at, then a reasonable decision can be made.
So in your mind, it's kind of the same thought, as opposed to two different goals? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Zoning issues has always been a little thorn in my behind. I can see through, going through town on a daily basis, the places that do not have permits, when they're adding on, and that I mean, they've got to come in and get a license for the particular job. I mean, you can go down Pine Point Road, and there's three that stick out unbelievable front Porsches that are 20 feet long, four feet off the ground, they don't have a railing. front Porsches that are 20 feet long, four feet off the ground, they don't have a railing. Now, there's two aspects that I'm looking at is that, is, number one, it's allowing people to put something up that's going to come back and bite somebody, whether they sell out the house or someone gets hurt on it. You've all seen, in Massachusetts, they had a series of decks falling off from the third floor, and it's because they didn't have a license to do it, and it was done incorrectly, it was put up with nails instead of with bolts. People were dying, falling off them, and you don't need to fall from 20 feet.
So better enforcement?
I hate to say it, but I'd say enforcement, period. Because these same places, they're still there 10 years, 10 years later. Now, there's going to be a portion of it that's just going to happen, but there's a lot of it that is missed, whether there needs to be someone within the, in the building department paid to on a weekly, monthly, yearly basis, go around and check the places. They're getting paid anyway, it's more money in the bank.
Jim, I'd like to talk to you after, there are particular places you know about, I need to check in on those. But I heard enforcement, and you started with zoning, and you went to, I guess, kind of building codes.
Enforcing the building code.
Violation, building code violation.
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay.
For me.
Ed?
Just to get back to the budget issue, I'll put a number up there, I think the mill rate should be flatlined and no more of an increase than 1.2%. And how we get to it, I don't know, but we'll back into it if we have to.
They said mill rate flatline, but tax rate increase 1.2, I'm not sure if I understand the difference there.
No, mill rate, flat rate, flatline the mill rate, or at worst, no greater than 1.2%, which would be equal to roughly the CPI.
Can I reduce it to 30?
Well, I mean, it's, friendly amendment might be 1.5 because it's sort of rounding, but it's, it's in that neighborhood. I mean, I don't know exactly what it is, but I certainly think maybe, you want to round it to 1.5?
I...
Well, how do you feel?
Can I chime in on that? I, just thinking off the top of my head, and I'm going to throw one example out there, our salt and sand budget, this has been a horrible winter. Now, we've reaped the benefit of some mild winters, those budgets haven't been very high, gas hasn't been as bad because they're not running the trucks. I just, off the top of my head, general basic bottom line maintenance, I can tell you, I can envision those lines because they didn't have to repurchase. Those lines are going to be higher next year. And I don't look at that as, this is a, there's going to be those baseline expenses that we're not going to escape this year. And I just, I don't think you're going to hit it at one point, too. I appreciate the, you know, I mean, I appreciate it, but...
The dollars we spent were zero, no increase.
I don't...
You know, if something goes up, what do you do at home? If something goes up and you can't afford it, you take it away from something else. It's pretty simple.
My only point is that I know, because we're going to be talking layoffs, that's all there is to, on the municipal side, we are flat, we're as flat as flat, we are negative, we aren't, we're negative 2%. There's nothing left for us to get rid of, there's, we haven't hired, we've had a hiring freeze, we've been only giving some non-union, we're getting no raises, I mean, we've dropped them down to the worst possible health insurance plan, I mean, there's nothing left for us to go. So to say flat, just, and I can't speak for the school, but I know on the municipal side, to say you will be flat, it's, you're laying somebody off. And I just, I want to make sure that we're aware of that, that, I'm not saying that's not acceptable, I'm just saying, be aware, somebody's getting let go, whether that's a policeman, or a fireman, or a town clerk, I don't know what else to say, just be aware of that, that that's what that means, we're letting people go. There's no, nothing left on our side. Maybe there's some more wiggle room on the school side, but there's nothing left, it will mean layoffs.
Yeah, I know, I'm thinking, is there, kind of like the sequester for every dollar that we go over 1.5, does that, half of it have to come from cuts? I don't know how that exactly works, but it's a shared thing. If we're going to exceed 1.5% in the tax rate, then it just doesn't go up, even though we're at zero, we find, as Ed says, we find a way, to some percentage of that that goes over 1.5 has to be borne by reduced costs.
See, another item that I have under budget issues is that we should do a thorough review of all the fees and fines that are currently in effect, and adjust them if appropriate to increase potential revenue. There's another side to that, too, there's a lot of fines...
And earn a lot more tickets.
There's a lot of fines that are never imposed.
That's certainly a revenue issue, is that still generally under budgeting, or is that important enough to be a standalone goal? Increase revenue by way of the fines and fees?
It's part of the budget issue.
I mean, that's what you're going to do during the budget anyhow, you're going to be looking at that aspect of the budget.
We can dedicate, we can dedicate time, we can dedicate time to that.
So, well, maybe, maybe we shouldn't set a goal then this year of, I meant, I've heard this, the three of you are on the finance committee, and it's sounding like you know what you want.
As low as possible, I guess, that's the best thing I can say.
To sort of have a number in hand that you can...
It is, I mean, we invest a lot of time and effort, and if we come in so woefully beyond your expectations, it's, to the extent we know upfront, we'll do our best, in fact, I will, I will deliver a budget that meets your goal. The difference there is, it's what we have control over and what we don't have control over, and that's been the broken record for the last four years. Our spending has been kept in check, in fact, it's down 2.5, 2% over the last five years. It's all the external factors that are driving it, and at the end of the day, it's the tax rate that matters, that's what the taxpayer sees, and that's what hurts them, I know that.
I meant, you get a, the reality of the whole thing is, our biggest issue is for whatever, you know, whatever reason it may be at the time, is the school is the biggest factor in the budget, you know? I think if you, if you, you're looking for more cuts and you're not going to, they're not going to come from the school side, there's going to be municipal employees going home here, at town hall, public works, and you're going to have a reduction in services, so, you know, if that's what the people want, they want the schools funded and you want to take away from the municipal side, I don't want to hear it when the roads aren't plowed at the appropriate time. You know what I'm saying? I'm sure the, you know, and when you need a police officer and he's going to take, you know, longer to get there because there's only three instead of four, or two instead of three, then I don't want to hear about it. And you have to set your priorities. We've heard from the people saying the taxes are going up, that they're getting too much, which I have to agree, because I hear, you know, people say, you know, my, I don't care, I'll pay another $200, well, that might mean 600 to somebody else. And, you know, I mean, just because, you know, you might have a higher-priced property doesn't mean you've got that income, like we talked about earlier, to cover that, you know, your taxes.
Yeah, I don't suggest this to bury our head in the sand, because ultimately, it's the tax rate that matters, but what we have control over is the spending side, and at the very least, if you can give me a definitive target on that side...
Yeah, I was thinking, same as Tom, that if we just said, the cost side, there'll be a zero increase, because we are assuming we're going to lose ground on the revenue side. And that might mean we're at, you know, a tax rate increase of 1%, 1.5%, 2%, but if we set as a benchmark that we're going to have a flat expense side for this year, there's a reasonable chance that we won't hit the 3% or 4%. If we do, at least we can then say, hey, we don't, we have not raised the expenses in the town a penny. Every penny that is going into the tax increase is due to the state taking money away from us.
So you're saying, look at it more as a spending goal as opposed to...
I just was thinking the same thing that Tom just said, just think of it as a spending goal, because we can't predict where that ends up with the tax rate.
So what are you saying, flatline the spending?
Yep. Because our, what's our prediction, after hearing what we heard from the legislature?
No, not good.
That it's, that if we flatline the spending, we will have a tax increase. And we just, what we're praying is it isn't 4% or 5%.
Is that doable, Tom?
Not without some pain, I mean, there'll be the reduction of service, maybe, maybe reduction of force, I think the school will have a much more difficult time doing it than us. The fact is, I forget the number, it's 84% of the budget is fixed costs, salaries and benefits. So for them to do it, it certainly means cutting into staff resources. That's just a fact.
What happened in 2008 when we had a flatline budget? What kind of an impact was it to the town that year?
We used, we used savings.
We used fund balance partially, to artificially plug the hole, I believe that was the first year, and don't quote me in this, but in two successive years, the school reduced something in the order of 25 employees each year, and then frankly, we've been rebuilding, or they wanted to rebuild for the subsequent two or three budget years, they're about back to where they were before those cuts happened. I'm just being honest, and that's the facts of the case, but that's what we have control over, and that's what I can give very direct direction to my staff and to the school.
I get, let's...
Better to start low than to start high.
Okay.
Because everything, whatever we start with is going to end up going up, it's only going in one direction.
This is, I think, I got a way to take care of this, but right now, is there any, do you have anything else, Ed, for goals?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, go ahead with them, and we'll come back to the other issue, go ahead.
Okay. My next one is, review residential property assessments. And what that is, it's based upon this reassessing the oceanfront properties at Higgins Beach, Proust Neck, and Pine Point in 2012, which increased the town assessment by roughly $40 million. All the people have been fighting it, and if anybody's been reading all the write-ups on it or watching the tapes, it's a horror show. It's a real horror show. And I think the town council's got a responsibility to take a look at this and find out what's going on and be prepared, because 42% of the residential properties in this town are appraised over or below what the state guideline is. That's pretty bad news.
So you're asking, you're saying you think we should do a town-wide reevaluation?
Well, that's one of my things, yeah.
How much does that cost, Tom?
Rough numbers, half a million. We're actually talking to consultants about that already, so I can have better, more definitive numbers, but that's a rough number.
Wasn't that kind of the horizon for 2015?
Well, the staff is very interested in converting to some of the more modern assessing systems, and it probably makes sense as part of that to do a full revaluation, and then thereafter adopt their new system.
All right, well, that probably should be called, and reevaluation assessment.
I think, I think the town council needs to have a legal opinion on the town's chances with these discrimination cases that are going to be brought forward by these people. I want to hear from somebody totally independent that hasn't been involved in the thing, what our chances are of winning the cases or losing the cases, because there's big bucks involved here. So far, there's about a million dollars of revenue that we've billed out, or potentially will bill out to these homeowners, that we could have to turn around and give back to them.
What have the legal fees been so far?
And that's another thing, the legal fees just...
Yeah, I don't know exactly, in the order of $80,000, I think, between support for the board of assessment review and legal defense for town staff.
So, I meant, the legal opinion probably has already been rendered to us, correct? Or they wouldn't be fighting it, right? Would we be going forward if we thought we were going to lose?
We've, there's, there's a bunch of lawyers that are pleading the case for the town, okay? And there's a bunch of lawyers that are pleading the case for the homeowners, and they're totally different, their opinions are totally different, and if you listen to the proceedings on TV, it's hilarious, it really is, it really is. I think we need somebody to come in and say, their, your chances of winning a discrimination, that's another thing, this is all about discrimination, and discrimination just doesn't come up in any of the proceedings. And that's what's going to be going to court.
Are we in an active...
Not to my knowledge, but if the town, if the matters are appealed to Superior Court, then the town council certainly has, should be involved in the decision and the understanding of, should we defend this going forward?
And I guess maybe that is a goal, then, right?
Well, that will happen as a matter of course.
Yeah.
Should we, should the matters be appealed? I think that there's a more fundamental issue I think Ed's getting at, whether or not you want to consider...
A town-wide...
Town-wide.
A wide review or, and/or revaluation.
Bill, you want to just add a couple of things?
Well, there's a, for me, there's a preliminary question. When this all got started, I was one of the people who had the big tax increase.
Yep.
But I also happen to practice in this area, so I know it cold.
Right.
And so I helped, I wasn't going to participate in the lawsuit, just, that wasn't my interest, I wanted to be involved in the town as a town councillor. So I did help the people for quite a bit of time, but then I got elected and I stopped, and I've kept out of it, because having helped the taxpayers who were appealing, I felt as if I had a conflict to come in now and say, oh, I don't think Ed has any conflict, and Ed can say it, and he said it well.
Right.
And I also think that the evidence that came up, I can speak to the bit about a very, unrelated to the discrimination of these individual taxpayers, and I was one who was harmed by it, but, and therefore might eventually benefit if the Superior Court said, hey, everybody who got increased on the waterfront there, they're all getting it. So that's not, I don't want to have anything to do with that, but I do agree with Ed that Don Petron did an analysis, and it was then reduced to evidence in these proceedings that said, on a town-wide basis, the system looked flawed. that said, on a town-wide basis, the system looked flawed. It looked like we had, the, the rules require you to be within 10% of, when you have all these sales, within 10% of the assessment, up or down?
Yep.
So it's a big wide gap.
Right.
And over 50% of all the sales missed that goal.
Can I just, we, we have pending appeals still, and I think we're...
Yeah.
I think you're treading into, into area...
The groundwater.
Right. So I clearly, it's an issue on the part of council.
I know.
I gotta be involved with, with that, but that, that issue, I think, will eventually come up.
So, how do you phrase this?
Like Tom said, we've got to be careful about how we discuss this, if it's, you know, so, all right.
I mean, I heard a couple of different things from, from Ed. He started with a review of town assessment methods, I thought I heard, and then there's been conversation of revaluation, those could be...
Independent town-wide reassessment in 2014. I think we're due for a reassessment this year, I'm not sure, but I think we are. I think the last one was done in 2004. I don't know whether it's state requirement, do you have a reassessment every 10 years or not, but, just based upon what's been brought up so far, we should seriously consider...
Tom, you had mentioned you had thought, just off the top of your head figure, that was about, how much for a town-wide?
Half a million.
About half a million, it might be more. We're, we're actually having conversations with one of the premier firms, so I'll have a, a budget number for it, for sure.
Can I be a stinker and tell you that means we won't be spending money?
Right.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
No, no, and that's why I asked, that's, that's a chunk of cash.
But you've got to spend money to be fair, though.
Absolutely, but no, I'm just putting that up there.
Yep. Okay. I've got independent town-wide revaluation.
But that would be, Tom, coming back to us with what the boat enforcement planning board says, is their best judgment on the timing and the appropriateness of that?
No, this is a separate third-party firm that comes in and does a town-wide...
What I'm saying is, is, are the people who report to you on ass, on assessing, say, yes, it is timed to do that? I mean, we don't, we don't have an, we're not professionals, so it would, we would look to you and the assessing department.
We have a new assessor, he has come to me, and that's why we reached out, just to try to get some budget figures. His, I believe his motivation is that he'd like to move to this newer, better system, and as part of that, it does make sense to contract with them to do the full wide revaluation. I don't believe his motivation is that we, our values are terribly out of whack, but he's, he is collecting that budget information, and will be prepared to present that, and we can do that sooner, if, if the council wishes. We may well be talking about this issue, should these matters be appealed to Superior Court, between now and then.
Well, that's another thing that we've got to put up there. We have to stay on top of this issue now, not just the independent town-wide reassessment, but stay on top of the process that's going on, all the appeals, and then the, the potential lawsuits. We have to stay on top of that.
Well, once, once we're served, we're served, and, and we'll certainly be aware and in attention, I'm not sure what you mean beyond that.
Well, what I mean is, I want to know, I want to have somebody tell me what our chances are of winning those or losing those lawsuits, so that we can make decisions as to, do we, do we pursue the lawsuit, or do we just drop it?
That will happen as a matter of course, if the town sued, I will approach the council and seek your advice for whether we defend.
What do you mean? We could stop the, we could stop it right now, if we wanted to. We could say, "That's it, no more. We're going to give back the $40 million, and start from ground zero, and we'll do an independent town-wide revaluation."
Certainly, we could have a town legal opinion, I don't know that necessarily needs to be a goal, but we can certainly, you know, I mean, Tom can call the town attorney tomorrow and say, "Give us your legal opinion on the processes that we had, and we used, and the tools, and the software, and if you have an opinion that there was something in error, or, you know, I mean, that's certainly easy, you know, I think that's just a phone call.
Well, I, I think I hear Council Blais wanting to have firsthand, face-to-face opportunity to hear from them and ask questions. There are, there continue to be pending appeals, so we need to, I'm sensitive to not muddying those waters. Others have been adjudicated through the local process, and it remains to be seen whether they go further.
Clerk's running on the first set, for appeal to Superior Court.
That's right.
Their 30 days will run out soon.
So, that, that seems very fine-grained for a goal for 2014, and I appreciate that it's coming up in this venue. If, if the council as a group wishes to have me bring in legal experts to advise the council, then I'll certainly do that, I might suggest that, I, I don't know if that fine-grained needs to be on your 2014 goals necessarily.
I, I maybe it's, review our assessing practices, would that, you know, as, as a policy? I'm, I'm asking you, Ed, I don't want to, you know, review our, our policies around our practices for, for that, or...
Well, I, I mean, the, the assessment process is all governed by state law. I'm not questioning that, I'm questioning what's going on now with the oceanfront properties, and the impact that it has on the town, or could potentially have on the town, and staying on top of that, and...
If, if it's that particular, I would suggest, one of two things should ha, needs to happen first, before the council should get involved. One is, a matter gets appealed to Superior Court, in which case, I think the council needs to be fully briefed on, on the status of the case, and make a decision whether we defend ourselves in that case. The other...
The first one could happen within a number of days, as far as I know, right?
Okay, then, then we'll have to convene and make a decision sooner than later in that regard. Beyond that, if, should that not happen, I, I would strongly recommend you let the local appeal process run its course, and then I think the council is free to engage their legal experts, and, and their, the town assessor, and whomever else you wish, to talk about those issues, but while they're pending, I strongly advise that you, you do not have that conversation.
That's fair. I would agree with that.
Is that it? You got anything else?
One more.
Oh, boy. Okay.
Well, this, we, we implemented the employee incentive program on the municipal side this year. I think we should encourage the school department to implement it on their side. It's just a simple one line, and, and that's it.
Okay.
Go ahead, I can...
Okay, you're all right.
Oh, he's still writing.
I already gave it to... Said you can go ahead.
Thank you. You should have received mine anyway, but just to go over them real, very quickly, and you could see a theme with mine, it's communication, because I think that communication and, and clear, concise communication between parties helps avoid a lot of issues down the line. That being said, my first goal is improved communication, and I broke it up to be between counselors, and I'd like to see us sharing emails, received and sent, so when I get something that's just to me, I'm sharing it with other counselors, and, and my replies also, and I like to see that happen, just so we're all on the same page, or know what's going on, and then give others heads-up on issues as necessary in a timely ma, timely manner. And then, between counselors and constituents is huge, try returning emails within reasonable time. I, I follow the 24-hour rule, but I do that because of business. Return your phone calls, have office hours around town if possible, or have counselors available for people to come in and talk to, I know that was talked about at town hall at some point. Make better use of our website, make use of our TV station capabilities. I know we used to do, what was it, First Friday forums was something that they did at one point. Regular communications with the local newspapers, I'm looking at Mike back there. And then, I love that about putting flyers in the tax bills, I think that's a fabulous idea, because that is an opportunity, since we're already doing that. Second is regular communication interaction with the legislative delegation, which we started today. Meet with members prior to session start, meet once a month within, during the session, and then have one or two counselors perhaps act as liaisons to the delegation, to be like the spokesperson, or if we decided we wanted to go up and have someone testify as, on behalf of the town council of Scarborough, or, I mean, that's just an idea to throw out there. Number three, I have, oh, he's, it has to do with business, to encourage and actively support SEDCO, the Chamber, and Bi-Local, in order that all of those outfits can assist us as the council in identifying and encouraging and supporting all businesses. I'd like to see a major effort made to identify home-based businesses. Again, when I was out campaigning, it's amazing how many people, I'm one of them, work from home, and have businesses, and I actually have some thriving businesses out there that I didn't even know existed, like, someone bakes birthday cakes, and, you know, I was just interested in seeing these small businesses.
Is that a zoning issue?
No, not necessarily.
It could be, yes, it could be.
Well, it could be.
A broadening and allowance of home-based businesses.
Well, right, and it could go into ordinance, I mean, and those are all things too, that could go into ordinance, but it's just something to look at, what's business look like in this town, and where we want it to go, because I, I'm of the, of the opinion that bricks and mortar is not the future of a lot of businesses, due to technology, except for manufacturing and some retail, but even retail, you look at Amazon, I mean, they own the bricks and mortar, they're going to have those drones flying around, dropping off your packages. Four was improved communication with school department through working with the Board of Education, and encouraging us on the council to visit the schools, meet with the superintendent, and meet with the board, other than during budget time, just to have a picture of what's going on there, so that we know when they're sending us a budget, we have a better idea of what the heck they're talking about.
Yeah.
And then, five, I've got, keep the tax rate stable, I didn't come up with any 1.2s and whatever, by engaging regularly with those entities who most impacted, those are those outside forces, and I've got, and I was thinking off the top of my head, that basically, it's your legislature and schools, and actively advocate for the taxpayers of Scarborough, and examine current and future budgets with an eye towards efficiency and efficacy. So that's mine.
Lot of communication...
Well, I communicate with the school department, so it goes on, yeah, I mean...
One thing you can talk more specifically about email protocol, is that kind of internal issue of the council.
Right, I see that more as a probably, maybe a policy thing that we develop, or whatever.
I thought that came by, that we're starting with, so, the thing about the social media, that we're not using it very well.
Yeah.
Much at all? I kind of follow that, but all the communication, a huge percentage of our population, they get all their information through social media and nothing else.
The police department and the fire department do fabulous job with Facebook.
So going forward, if you're not sending information to some of those channels, we're missing an increasing percentage of the population.
Yeah, I agree with that.
But there's some challenges and potential pitfalls.
Yeah. It'll grow, I mean, it's largely under the age of 30.
Actually, the greatest growth in Facebook spending between ages of 40 and 64.
But it's not, it's Facebook's past.
It is, for the younger kids, it's way past, eh?
Five generations.
They're in a Snapchat, and, I don't know, Jessica probably is more...
Yeah, Snapchat, WhatsApp, blah, blah, blah. Yeah.
I'm not sure if I missed something at the end of last slide.
I just said, keeping the tax rate stable, by...
Got that one.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's repeating everyone, sort of, yeah, I think we're all on the same track there.
I just, I have a couple thoughts, I'll just put, oh, I'm sorry, Richard, you haven't gone yet.
Richard hasn't gone yet.
Nothing from you.
You know, I, I'm just going to touch on basically, probably most of what's already said. I think one of the top things is, to me, is affordable houses. You have workforce housing, I don't like that, I don't like that name either, and I don't think affordable housing covers it either, because that could mean apartments. I'm looking at houses that are affordable for, for, you know, you know, starter houses. I thought we had that started, but it didn't work out, so we got to look at it again. Jessica and I have been, and Tom have been talking about this in, quite in depth, of how we're going to make it happen.
You should talk to the town of Yarmouth, because they had affordable housing, it was pretty successful, but then the issue becomes when you go to sell it, I know, again, running into it.
We talked about...
And, and then it ends up leaving the affordable and becoming, but anyway...
Well, well, we're, we've, we've talked about that, Tom and I have, maybe...
Because the town of Yarmouth had, had a program that was pretty successful at one point.
So, that being said, I meant, being on the council for the time that I have, I've seen support come and go for SEDCO. I, I think the supporting SEDCO is very important, promoting business in town is very important. Ordinance reviews, that would fall under, where was it?
Business-friendly?
Is it business-friendly permits, that would kind of be, you know, also, ordinance reviews, do, some, some ordinance will just say, for an example, septic may be too, you know, overstringent, more than what we need, well, we need to look at that and change it, if that's the case. That's just an example.
Yep.
And I think we should, this is, two new ones that I have, would be, once again, the website, town website, I think can be, could be better than it is, and committee, once again, this year, committee report, the committee reports, the minutes of the meeting, what these committees discuss, put onto the website for transparency, so that the public can see what they're actually talking about. Some of the committees, they've loaded stuff on, but it's, it's old, there's nothing new and updated. And fifteen, oh...
Okay.
Fifteen would be, review the needs of this municipality. What, what conditions are buildings in, oh, I should say, future needs, you know, future needs of public safety, future needs of Public Works, future needs of, um, town hall possibly.
So like, long, long-term capital improvement plan?
Right. Um, you know, there's been talk in the past about a community, community center, or a senior center.
Right.
Um, there's talks of...
Public safety.
Yeah, public safety.
So I just called it long-range facility planning?
Yes, absolutely.
Schools going through their own process, it'd be great to dovetail it at some time during the year, and, and really prioritize as a community what's important.
Yeah. I got ordinance review, website, SEDCO, remote business. The one thing I wanted to just mention, that I made a note of, you know, when we, you know, not buy police car for a couple of years, or something to that effect, when it comes to police officers, we've got to think about their safety too, and, and, you know, can that car make it? The best example is Public Works, they put three dump trucks off for the longest time, and they limped them to the auction, matter of fact, one of them, the rear end went on Higgin's Parkway on the way to the auction, so, I think we got our value out of them, but that's what we've got to be careful of, because one lost an engine, we had one or two broken frames, you can only stretch them so long, and that's what we've got to be careful of, Ed, that's... That's the only thing I want, you know, it's okay if we can get away with it. If we can't, we've got to be careful with that. Because then we could end up with having a, you know, a big bill the following year for, you know. I meant they stretched the ladder truck longer, as long as they could.
Poke your finger through the frame.
But, you know, I think they've done a good job so far with that stuff. And then, that's it for me. And then, I think we should, we'll go around the table, and we'll put a number on that, on the budget. Okay? What's your number?
On the cost side?
Yep.
Zero.
You, zero?
Zero.
Well, because you talked, all right, no.
And let the, and let the, let the tax rate be more, it's out of our control. We're saying we're not spending any more than-
Cost or spending? Or are you considering that same?
Cost.
Okay.
Yeah, spending. Yeah. That the tax rate is gonna just take care of itself. It's out of our control how Augusta treats us. But at least, if we want to be responsible, we are assuming we're not going to get treated well. So a zero cost puts us at an increase in taxes of one and a half, two, two and a half, three. Something bad, but that's, I could live with. An increase that I don't like if I knew we at least had held the line on our spending.
No spending at all?
Yeah.
So that means we're talking that the contractual obligations are still covered?
You had, what?
No new spending. Okay. Is that what you're saying, getting at?
That their budget from last year is going to be their budget for this.
Okay.
That's different than what you just said.
Exactly.
It's flat.
Right, flat, right. Zero isn't flat.
Those contractual requirements, we'll have to tighten the belt elsewhere to compensate for those requirements.
That's where I'm getting confused. I don't know whether it's zero or flat.
I would be, because if it turns out that we get some revenue from the state that we didn't expect, and we get some revenue from increased assessments that we didn't expect, I don't mind going up to one and a half, two percent. But I'm not, I don't want to get sort of hookwoked into that. So I'm just gonna say, let's just start on the cost side, and we'll let the revenue side kind of unfold.
All right, well, Jessica, where are you at?
I'm at an absolute maximum of three percent going out to-
Tax rate.
To the, in the actual, and I want to be careful about this word, because I said the word wrong last year. So I'm not saying rate, or I'm not saying anything else. I'm saying the bill that goes to their physical hand is not three percent higher than it was the year before. So, that's where I'm at.
Would that be three percent on the mill rate?
It's mill rate.
Mill rate.
Well, how's that, what's that translate into 1.2, or?
I don't know, what's current mill rate, 1480?
Because you don't know what the-
Okay, yeah, right, okay. Okay, Jim?
Zero.
Zero. I'm at three. You're at?
Jim, Jim, you, zero on the spending?
Or zero on the tax rate?
Or zero on the tax rate.
Zero on the spending.
So he and I are talking the same thing?
Yes.
I may be talking the same thing.
Well, you're darn close.
You'll probably end up being right.
In the final analysis, I think it's gonna be darn close.
This is, like, I don't, because I'm like, I think we're talking about the same thing.
We are, we are.
I think it's all-
You're three percent on the tax rate.
But let me tell you something. It's a good thing that we're having this discussion.
We just played it safe.
Right, I think you're right. You're gonna be zero on the spending, and you're gonna wind up being three percent when the small ball clears.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think we're all talking about-
I think we're all saying the same thing.
So translate that and give us a budget.
Zero on the spending, but 1.2 percent on the- I'm saying the CPI. Don't let the tax rate go higher than the CPI.
What if the CPI jumps?
Right now, it's 1.2 percent in the last twelve months.
So it can't move a lot.
Okay.
Every that many more months before we'd be using it as a benchmark.
Now, this was easier in the past years.
Really?
So what are you saying? What are you saying?
I go with the three percent. I go with the three percent.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I understand where Bill's coming from with that. Hold the line if we can on the spending, as much as we can.
I mean, we just start there, because that's the only thing we can actually give direction to Tom, to give direction to the department heads. We'll keep our fingers crossed that we don't get screamed with reduced revenue.
All right, I think we're, I don't, do you understand what we're talking about, Tom?
Not particularly. I mean, I don't, I understand it. I don't think there's, I haven't heard consensus, I guess is my point.
I can't wait to see how this is written up in the leaning bag.
I got three zeros and three threes.
Let's pick, let's pick one or the other.
When the bill goes out, it's three percent.
Either zero here is what I'm hearing.
Yep.
Yep.
Three percent, with the exception of Ed. I think it's difficult to have targets, frankly. Effectively, if it's three percent here, it's likely to be zero or less than zero.
Well, let's do the three percent then.
Because anybody who has to do a budget says, well, it's three percent, so I'll go up three percent. Because they're assuming that our revenue stream's gonna be the same.
Right.
That's how, I think you got whipsawed last year.
No, 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 not true. There's a, there's a new normal. There's not these assumptions.
The old budget and stuff.
The reason that we're down two percent in spending over a five-year period.
But see, there was an extr- there, from the tax rate, we have to do an extrapolation to get the spending budget.
Right.
We have to say, how much are we going to have to get below the tax rate of three percent to actually then?
That's what, yep.
See, that's-
Who's on first?
I say you just go with-
So no new spending?
Right.
Don't ask for anymore. You just get what you got last year, and the rest is you cover your contractual obligations. Is that, or not?
Just be careful that, you're talking about eighty percent of the budget, the school-
No, I understand. That's what I'm trying to find out, because you're gonna have layoffs in the school then.
Good point.
You're gonna have layoffs in the school.
Zero plus contractual obligations.
Not necessarily. They have a million, actually.
This is, listen, this is the goal. You're not adopting the budget tonight. This council will have the final-
I know it's a goal, but I don't want to do another goal that we can't meet like last year. I just embarrass-
Fair point. It's a fair point.
Don't you think?
As little as possible. Can we leave it at that?
Didn't come out right last year, did it?
Keep the tax rate stable.
How about, as a compromise, this number be three percent or less?
Yep.
Or less?
Three percent or less.
Yeah, that's letting them know three percent's okay.
This number, you have, you have-
Is he or less in capital letters?
I'll write it in purple if you-
For you, we'll do it in caps.
The tax rate piece is something you really have control over.
Right.
At the front end of the budget, when we're putting our budgets together, we don't know, we won't know all these numbers from the state. This supplemental budget process won't be done until-
The eleventh hour.
You're nearly done. We're gonna be back to the eleventh hour again.
But there's no way we're gonna get as much money as we got last year.
Probably not, but-
Probably not.
Here's our crystal ball.
No chance.
No, right. It's practical.
So, so, I mean, I, I mean, I could see saying, well, the cost or expense side will be up one percent or two percent. Because it's true. We're just making the point. There are contractual commitments. So, I mean, but, but I, I think you're better off saying what that is gonna be, zero, one, two, whatever it might be, than you are saying what the tax rate is, because that's a total unpredictable number. I don't know.
Well, another one of the problems is the superintendent, and I don't like pointing fingers, but I got to point it somewhere, because he's accountable, is I almost felt embarrassed for them when they came back to us after being told a certain percentage, and there was the one year with the fourteen, there was another year with a twelve. And they came in with a straight face, yeah, we need 12 percent. Yeah, well, guess what, you're not getting it. And all of a sudden, they found places where it could come out of.
I think that's what I was saying about the improvement plan. Part of that is, but Tom needs a number to work with. I mean, at the end of the day, he needs-
No new spending. And then we'll see where it falls there.
Yep.
Is that consensus? No new spending?
Mm-hmm.
I meant, I'm sure the school is gonna go, yeah, okay.
That doesn't mean that we, we can't come back and say, we need cuts.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. This is a goal.
It's just a goal at this point. Something to shoot for.
It's initial guidance.
If you flat, yeah, let's just go with flat.
You say we won't come back and say, don't make cuts, did you say? Or make cuts?
No, no. I'm saying, even though we say flat line, doesn't mean that we can't come back and say we need additional cuts. You know, if the state says, hey, you gotta pay us fifty million dollars this year.
Or something else worse happens, like you spoke about earlier, which we don't want to go over again. Until later, we will.
All right.
All right. Do we really need to vote? I mean, these are only fifteen.
I just had two other thoughts I just threw out there. They don't need to be your goals. These are things that staff's gonna work on, many of which were already covered. But we will, probably early in the first quarter this year, report to the town on, Town Council on town properties and a proposed disposition. We've come to acquire properties through tax lien foreclosure and purchase, and goodness knows however else. Some of those properties don't serve any current, and we can't expect much future, any future use. And so the question is, you know, should we sell it? So we're working in, to prepare that. So that's something that we're gonna do, whether it becomes your goals is another matter. Also, marsh migration or sea level rise is, is real. And we need to really start getting ahead, understanding it and getting ahead of it with the whole marsh system that we have here. There's potentially huge impacts on public infrastructure, culvert size, roads, bridges.
That doesn't tie in with the FEMA. FEMA stuff doesn't cover that?
A little bit, a little bit.
Sort of related. It's sort of related to long-term planning.
Really for our capital planning, and also disaster response. There's a lot of different elements. So it's, it's, it's a phenomenon that's been very well documented now. It's happening, and we need to be prepared for it, so.
I'll offer up for that, because I went, Tom and I went to the FEMA meeting today in Portland. Just because I live at the beach, and so I had a lot of people who were interested in the issue. So, I'd be happy to work with Tom on the FEMA thing.
And we've been working on that marsh migration on the conservation portion, yeah.
So those are ongoing, and those will be, work will happen, and I think council will hear reports on that through the course of the year, anyway. So to answer your question, you don't need to vote? I don't?
No.
I got twelve. Twelve people over on responsible budgeting, because it's all part of the legislative dialogue. That's primarily focused on, don't take our money.
Right. Keep it holding, holding them accountable.
Yeah, or what other, what other spending, or sources of revenue can we have?
So I'll merge twelve under one?
Yeah, so you're done.
As kind of a strategy, if you will?
I don't think we need to vote on it. I think we're good. I think that's a good, I meant, it's like, some years we had twenty-five, so.
And four and thirteen are really more or less combined, too. You know, we've got your business, business-focused stuff.
Okay, I'll merge those two, so it looks like you have twelve.
Yeah.
I think it's all stuff that we can accomplish this year.
We have, and that'd be key. If we can accomplish it, that will, that would be great.
Fabulous.
Good. Our work is done. I will find two of these. I will change the concept. I'll try to make it concise and understandable. And I shouldn't have time.
Then when?
Yeah. No, I'll get it done. It'll be on your agenda for your next meeting on the fifteenth. I'll get it done tomorrow.
Did everybody get to say what they wanted tonight? Nothing left?
Good job, Jim.
You got your everything out, Ed. All right. So there's no adjournment, because it's just a workshop, so it's done.
Yeah.
Our thoughts are with Kate.
With Kate.
Oh, yes. Oh, one other thing, I forgot. Yes, tough day for Kate. One thing I was gonna mention, did Kate ever get you a list of goals that, yeah? No, okay.
No, I saw this morning.
I mentioned, yeah, I know, I mentioned that to her a while back.
I sent her an email to have her send me some, but she never responded back to me, so.
Okay, well, all right, well, she's got a lot going on, so I meant, if she's got something we can add, you know, we can add.
Also, if it's gonna be incorporated in here, I don't think I've heard.
We can touch on some of that stuff.
Good. Thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you.
Keeping your thoughts, I believe, that Ron Altman's father died.
Yes, he did.